Ladies and gentlemen, we have to check this out to see what's loud and what's not. Welcome to the July 16th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. I'm looking for the little light to come on back there. I guess we'll just let it buzz your head. We welcome you here. We're glad everyone's here and also those that are home watching on Channel 16 of Time Warner. And we're just glad that everybody was able to be seated and all together here. You know, looking around the room, and John Stanley, this might be for you, that looking around the room, being a good Presbyterian and seeing all these people, I think about calling the ushers down with their plates. We might get a few dollars here for the city till Mr. Bunn. Okay. Folks, before we start, and certainly I want to call on Councilman Walter Kimball for the prayer. Before we do, I would like very much to, you know, when someone in our community in Gastonia passes away, it's never a happy moment. And certainly, there's always, with everyone, a lot of memories, a lot of things to think about. And that's the way it's supposed to be. We lost a wonderful person this past week in Charles Ziegler. He was, you had to know him, you had to, well, he knew a lot of people, and he loved everyone. He did a lot for the city and for this community. Public Service Gas Company is and was, and is now a wonderful neighbor and a wonderful partner to our city. But he lived the full life, and certainly, I'd like to have just a moment of silence for Mr. Charles Ziegler Sr., after which Councilman Kimball will have the prayer.
Dear Lord, we ask your blessing this evening on this meeting, on all those that have come out from their homes and their businesses who address this body over the issues that are set before us this evening. We do, however, also ask your blessing. Across this great nation, we've suffered a tremendous loss. Prescott, Arizona, 19 members of the Granite Mountain Hotshots lost their lives trying to save people's homes and to fight a terrible wildfire. So although many times we focus on what is very close in our neighborhoods, in our cities, and in our hearts, we also ask your blessing on all those families of those that have made the ultimate sacrifice, that they would find your strength and somehow a way to cope with this tragedy, and for those that are left behind, the ability to go on. Lord's name we pray.
Thank you, sir. If we please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving along on the agenda now, the item C is the adoption of the agenda. I will say that item three under the consent agenda has been taken out and moved. More work to be done on it, number, item three. But is there a motion to approve?
Second here, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand, please. Thank you. Item D is approval of the minutes. And Ash, we want to take those, can we do those together? Okay. City Council Work Session, May 22nd, and the regular council meeting, June the 4th. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve, sir.
Is there a second? Okay. Discussion, all in favor? Raise your hand, please. Thank you. Item E is the public expression that Mrs. Craig was referring to, and no one has signed up for that, so we'll, and of course, that's consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? All right. Well, that takes us all the way down to the item six. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, for the record, as mayor, I am going to recuse myself from this decision to approve or deny this application that is item six for the new shopping center in Gastonia for two reasons. First, I have represented the local Abshire family as their real estate broker since 2007, long before being elected mayor of Gastonia. Secondly, on the other side of the coin, my wife and I own a residential lot backing up to Kendrick Road in Randolph Park, very close to the proposed shopping center where we have planned to build. And for these two conflicting reasons, I must recuse myself from participating in this decision. May I have a motion for the recusal?
Second.
Second. We'll get rid of them. Okay.
Quickly.
Discussion, yeah, quickly. All right. All in favor? Thank you very much. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem, Mrs. Brenda Craig. Thank you.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, while you come to the center room and take the gavel, I just wanted to touch on the standard for being legally excused from the meeting, since we've just touched on that with the motion to excuse the mayor. While the city council has a custom of excusing council members for, you know, being absent or being on vacation, actually, the legal standard is except upon matters that affect your financial interest. It's got to be a direct, substantial, and identifiable increase in money as a result of the vote. And just owning property, which is the second thing that the mayor mentioned, is not enough. It has to be the property. Mr. McAtire has asked me to state for the record that he owns two lots in Planters Ridge, but that is not sufficient cause to be legally excused from the meeting. If just owning property in the vicinity was enough to be excused from voting, we would take that to a logical conclusion, and we wouldn't have anybody who could vote. But the issue of Mr. McAtire's ownership of those lots came up in 1999 when he was mayor, and both the Institute of Government and a Superior Court ruled that that is not legal cause to be excused. So I just wanted to state that for the record, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, before we begin.
Before I open this public hearing, as I mentioned earlier, I'm going to read some guidelines for this agenda item six for the council to approve. First of all, staff will give a report. Jason Thompson, when I call him. Applicant attorney will make her presentation, limited to 20 minutes. Attorney for the opposition will have 20 minutes to give his presentation, but he has given his time to three members that will be speaking on the opposition's support. Citizens who have signed up to speak will be called to the podium and have three minutes to speak. After all citizens have been heard, council may have questions that they won't answer. If that be the case, you may ask the person to come to the podium and answer the question. After all questions have been answered, I will recognize the applicant, and they will have five minutes for rebuttal. After that, I will recognize Mr. Authers, and he will have five minutes for rebuttal, or anyone that he appoints. I will then close the public hearing. Once the public hearing has been closed, then there will be no more questions or answers. I would like a motion for the council to adopt these guidelines for this particular public hearing.
I make the motion, ma'am.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number six, public hearing, Dakota Group Limited, W. Lamar and Marlene Stroup, and Roy Williams and Annabelle Kelly. Subject hearing involves considering the rezoning of roughly 20.05 acres from RS 8 CD Residential Conditional District, RS 12 Residential District, and C1 CD Neighborhood Commercial Conditional District. Two, C3 CD General Commercial Conditional District. The property is located on the east side of Robinwood Road between Kendrick Road and Heatherlock, and is owned by Dakota Group Limited, W. Lamar and Marlene Stroup, and Roy Williams and Annabelle Kelly. The Gastonia Planning Commission voted 3-5 on a motion to deny the rezoning request. At its meeting on June 18th, 2013, the Gastonia City Council voted unanimously to continue this item to its July 16th, 2013 meeting. I open the public hearing. The blue sheets?
Just real quickly, there are a few people here who are here for 212 West Main that was approved on the consent agenda, the Arts on Main lease that has been approved, so they can leave if they want to.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to announce that, so they don't sit here for the next several hours.
Okay. If you were here for 212 West Main, and that has been taken care of, so if you want to leave, you can. If you want to stay and listen to the conversations that we're going to have, then you're welcome to stay here. Okay? Will I have the sign-up sheets? Jason, if you will present the staff report, please.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, thank you and good evening. In the interest of time tonight, I'm going to attempt to make my presentation as brief as possible. What I want to do is just to touch very quickly on the context of this decision with regard to the city zoning map, what the current zoning is on this property, and then, after that, touch a little bit on some of the more particular points or development characteristics that have been the topic of discussion either prior to the planning commission meeting, during the planning commission meeting, and since the planning commission has taken place. The applicant has prepared a very detailed presentation and will, as you can see behind me on some of these boards that they have, they also have a digital version of that presentation. So they'll be delving really deeply into a lot of those site characteristics. I, of course, will be available to answer any questions with regard to that. So I'll first call your attention to the rezoning map that should be coming up on your screen here in just a couple of seconds, and it's also included in your agenda packet. The property here in question is a roughly 20-acre site there at the intersection of Kendrick Road, Robinwood Road. As you can see there on the zoning map, the area that is in the hatched blue is the rezoning subject property. It is currently three different distinct zoning designations, as was mentioned by Mayor Pro Tem Craig. The area shown there in pink is the commercially zoned property, and it's conditionally zoned. It's actually approved for up to almost 39,000 square feet of commercial space. As we stand here today, about 5,000 square feet of that commercial space has been developed right there on the corner of these two major thoroughfares. The remainder of the property remains undeveloped and wooded right now. Another portion of the property, the largest portion of the property you see there in the brightest yellow on that zoning map, is zoned conditionally for 23 patio homes. That is completely undeveloped at this point in time and remains wooded. The remaining portion of the site is covered by a single-family residential zoning district, the RS 12 zoning district. Now, in terms of the proposal that is before you tonight, and again, we'll certainly be able to get into, you know, looking at the site plan and some of those details, but just to hit on some of those high points, like I mentioned, because some of these standards have been a little bit fluid through time. There's been a little bit of negotiation back and forth, whether it be between city staff and the developer, or the developer working with the neighborhood to come to, you know, conclusions about what is best with regard to some of these standards. Tonight, the proposal before you tonight has a 104,000-square-foot maximum for the entire development. In other words, whatever the mixture of uses, you know, along with the grocery store and the other out parcels, that would be capped at 104,000 square feet. The developer has agreed to widen Robinwood Road from its current four-lane cross-section to a five-lane cross-section. The developer has also agreed to widen Kendrick Road along the property frontage, of course, from its current two-lane configuration to a three-lane configuration. Developer, if this is approved, obviously, will also install a new signalized intersection at the primary access point to the development on Robinwood Road, and that would also include pedestrian signalization and crosswalks. An 80-foot buffer, which far exceeds the Unified Development Ordinance standard for a development of this style adjacent to residential, is included in the applicant's proposal for the areas that are adjacent to the Planters Ridge subdivision and the single-family lots in the St. Mary's development that is along Kendrick Road. In addition to that, the entire project boundary where it is adjacent to residential also includes a masonry screen wall that would be at least six feet in height. So that's the buffering that the applicant has agreed to above and beyond ordinance standards. There are architectural and material standards for the development. You'll see some more of that when the applicant gets into their presentation. They have also agreed to eliminate a number of different C3 general commercial district uses, principally, and probably most notably, one of the ones that has been discussed most at length was convenience stores. And so they have eliminated that as a possible use in the development. They've also agreed to limit drive-throughs to a maximum of two for the development. They've also agreed to provisions that will reduce the ordinance allowable sign size for monument signs along both the Kendrick frontage and the Robinwood Road frontage. And again, you'll see some more of those details as the applicant gets into their presentation. In terms of staff's review of this item, one element in terms of site characteristics remains with regard to the comments staff provided to the development team. And that is related to the rear building elevation of the main center building. When I say main center building, I'm talking about where the grocery store anchor and the buildings that are attached and flank that grocery store space are. That rear elevation that would be, that is adjacent to the Planters Ridge subdivision. As I said before, they're proposing a pretty substantial buffer there. Staff is uncertain whether or not that buffer will be adequate to ensure that the rear of that building is not visible from that Planters Ridge subdivision. And so with that in mind, staff has asked that the developer commit to that rear elevation being consistent, both in architectural details and materials with the rest of the development. That, in terms of our review and dealing with specific site and development characteristics, that remains the lone item, where staff is recommending that this be included as part of the development, and the developer has not committed to making that a part of their proposal. Now, with all that being said, I pointed out earlier, my intention was to be brief, to allow the discussion and the presentation of the applicant to begin very quickly. I will be available to answer any questions that you have, either now or following the applicant's presentation.
Questions of count.
Jason, one question. You said that there's an 80-foot buffer, and you said the UDO standard. What is the UDO standard? How many feet?
You would typically see something in the neighborhood of 20 to 25 feet of buffer area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Jason, from council? Councilman Pierce, all.
Jason, you've mentioned several times that there were changes to the C3 zoning that the builder had agreed to. Who requested that?
My understanding of that is that it's probably a couple of different answers. One is some of this discussion started in the planning commission meeting with regard to what is allowed throughout C3. The UDO sets forth a whole list of uses that are allowed in every zoning district. The C3 district, it's a commercial zoning district, it's pretty intensive, so it allows a pretty broad array of different types of commercial uses. So some of that discussion started, it really particularly started to focus in on convenience stores and drive-throughs. So the developer at that meeting, at the planning commission meeting, agreed there to some limitations on that. My understanding is since that time, the developer has continued conversations with the neighborhood and in an effort to try to address some of that further concern about that broad array of uses, committed to further limiting the types of uses that they would be allowing in their C3 district if it's approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
Jason, is there a, normally, we, most times, if memory serves me correctly, there's a staff recommendation. I don't really see one here, other than the staff request for the comprehensive plan to be formally amended. Can you comment on that?
Sure, yes. Most times, and there is precedent for there not being a specific recommendation included in the agenda, but you're exactly right, usually there is. Just to give you a little background in terms of how staff evaluates these requests, applications are submitted, a staff review committee convenes every month to review these items. Typically, that evaluation will result in a consensus of opinion, I would say, amongst staff with regard to the proposal that's brought before them. I would characterize it as the difficult characteristics and the fluid nature of a lot of these standards, as this has progressed over the past five to six months, resulted in there not really being that type of consensus amongst staff. Likewise, and I guess as a testament to the complexity that we're dealing with with this particular land use decision, the planning commission's vote that they had at their May 9th meeting also reflects that they were unable to really reach any particular decision on the matter. Staff's focus always is, regardless of whether there's a recommendation in place, but particularly so in a situation like this, where there is such a large amount of public involvement, so much activity, I fielded so many phone calls, so many emails, I've met with so many folks from the neighborhood. At the same time, I've met over and over again with the developer, and, you know, whether it be on the development team side, or whether it's the neighbors who are either opposed or who are in support of it. You know, we do our best to focus on our role as facilitators. That is one of the roles we serve in ensuring that the public interest is kept in mind and served in these cases. And so that's really where our focus has been here, to, you know, make sure information is gotten out to the appropriate folks and in a timely manner, and that all deadlines are met, and to allow the public hearing process really to play out as it is intended to. Now, in terms of, you know, the city's comprehensive plan, the city's Unified Development Ordinance, any of those standards, I, of course, am happy to answer any questions that you have about that. We have other city staff members here as well. Rusty Boss, the city engineer, can help to address anything related to, you know, any of the road improvements and how that has played out, along with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. But in an effort to address a question about staff's evaluation, just to reiterate, it didn't really result in a consensus in this particular situation.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Gallagher.
Jason, when I read how the planning commission reviewed this and how they voted on it, it just sounds strange. May 9th, 2013, the Gastonia Planning Commission voted 3-5 on a motion to deny the zoning? It sounds like they didn't want it to go forward, but it sounded like someone made a motion to deny it, and they lost that motion. However, the planning commission wanted it to go forward, so five people voted in favor of this going forward, and three voted against it?
Well, technically, given that the motion was to deny and that it failed, there was no specific action taken by the planning commission, but certainly, looking at the way the vote played out, you could gather from it that there were five planning commission members voicing a degree of support for the proposal.
Thank you.
I will say that I believe Dr. Mark Epstein is here representing the planning commission.
That's correct.
If any council member has questions for Dr. Epstein, we will entertain those now.
I do.
Okay.
Good evening, Dr. Epstein.
Good evening, good evening.
We wouldn't want you to sit out there and not have something to say.
If you would just state your name and address, Dr. Epstein, for the record, please.
Certainly. Mark Epstein, 2138 Winter Lake Drive, Gastonia, North Carolina.
Thank you.
So I can maybe answer Commissioner, Councilman Gallagher's question, and begin with that. I can answer any questions you might have along the way. This was, as you probably know, was a protracted discussion, thoughtful one, I might add. And actually, I'd like to begin by taking the same note that Councilman Kimball did, that we noticed that there was not a recommendation. Jason said that there has been precedent for that, but it's not just unusual, it's like really unusual to not have a recommendation to approve or deny. Even with prospectively very controversial projects, and even complicated ones, we typically get a recommendation to approve or deny. And he was sufficiently vague for us as well, as was for you all. So that's fine. I mean, that lets us up to us without any kind of preconceived, you know, bias towards what the city might want, and that's fine. And to Councilman Gallagher's question, you're precisely right. In fact, I'd like to, you know, frame the deliberations around the application right around that motion, and full disclosure, I made that motion. The motion to deny was predicated on a couple of things, and it begins with the, despite the fact that the city had not made a recommendation, whether to accept or deny this particular application, that the city had made its wishes clear for this piece of property in the comprehensive plan, when that was voted on as recently as 2011. So it was clear to us that the city, or previous iterations of planning commission and city council, had looked at this piece of property and had given it thought, had given it consideration, and decided that the best and highest use for that particular spot would be as residential as it's currently zoned, and that furthermore, intense developments like this were to be relegated to nodes, you know, major intersections, and you know those areas that have actually grown up and is in exactly that way. So the motion that I made was, beginning with that, predicated on the fact that despite the lack of a formal recommendation at that hearing, that in fact, the city had made its position known for this piece of property. The comprehensive plan, of course, we know is not law. It is, however, policy. It can be bent, and it can be changed. The question that was before the planning commission was this fundamentally. Did the application meet certain criteria or standard that would allow us to vote in favor of an application that was not aligned with the comprehensive plan? And so my motion was predicated on the fact that it was not aligned with the comprehensive plan, which is the city's position and policy, and that frankly, public opinion at that time was running a solid seven, eight, or nine, or 10 to one against, with emails, phone calls, and actually testimony at that evening, at our hearing. So to kind of wrap things up, that those who voted in favor of the motion to deny thought that the application did not, you know, rise to a compelling enough level to violate or to go against level to violate or to go against the comprehensive plan, the city's previous policy, and those who voted in, uh, against that motion to deny, felt that it did. Felt that it did rise and, uh, above that bar, if you will, to allow us to go against the comprehensive plan, and frankly, against the public opinion. We did give some thought, actually, after the public hearing concluded, we thought we possibly should have actually, um, done a counter-motion to, to, in, in favor of the application, and have it five to three in favor, including the conditions that we had put in to kind of formalize that process. Uh, Jason assured us that, um, that they would, that the conditions would be, the, the additional conditions that the, to which the applicant agreed, would in fact appear before you, and they have. And the only one that didn't was the issue of, um, the, the back part of the development when it comes to materials, not the architectural design materials. And I cannot speak to whether, had, they, they've withdrawn that, agreeing to that condition, and I cannot speak to those five people who voted against the motion or in favor of the project, whether that would have swayed their vote or not.
So, so out of five, I mean, out of eight?
Yes.
Uh, people on the planning commission, five voted in favor, because it sounds like they voted to deny it, but it's not, but they voted in favor of the project going on, and three voted to, um, to not.
That's correct, that's correct. The, the five that voted against the motion to deny were, supported the project. And had we had another motion to, uh, accept or to, um, adopt the plan, those five would have voted for, and you would have had three against.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any questions of Jason now, that nobody has any questions? Okay. Uh, then I'm gonna start calling the first five people on this list, but I think that...
Madam Mayor, I think we're gonna let Ms. Pascal do the applicant presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Sorry about that. Uh, Mrs. Pascal? I better get my notes here.
I'm Nancy Pascal. My office address is 301 South York Street here in Gastonia. I represent the applicant, Mayor Phil Patrick Vermillion, who is asking to rezon the property located on the east side of Robinwood Road, between Kendrick and Heatherlock Drive. The owners of the subject property are the Dakota Group, which consists of Murky Apsher and her three daughters, Lamar and Marlene Stroop, and Bill and Annabelle Kelly. We are requesting that the property be rezoned to allow for a retail shopping center consisting of approximately 104,000 square feet, with an anchor grocery store, additional shops, and four out parcels. When our request was presented to Planning Commission, as you just heard, five of the commissioners were in favor of our rezoning request. I will not go into a lot of detail, since Steve Vermillion, the developer, will cover the project, and Steve Blakely will address traffic issues as a traffic engineer. But I would like to focus on several points. If you look at the map that was shown earlier by, uh, Mr. Thompson, that you have in your agenda packet, you will see that the Stroop property at the north, which is currently zoned R12, a single-family use consisting of approximately two acres. Then on the southern part of the property, you'll see a small triangle of about a one-third of an acre, again, zoned RS12. This is the only RS12 zoning in the parcel, which is your typical single-family residential zoning. Then you'll see the two parcels, um, of approximately three acres owned by the Kellys, that have already been zoned commercial. Then you have the large parcel owned by the Dakota Group, that is zoned RS8, conditional district, which is zoned as a conditional district, meaning that it would allow a higher density of development, contemplating a patio home community with some acreage for commercial use. So when you look at the parcel as a whole, you have essentially 17 acres that have a higher density of use, um, be it RS8 or commercial, than your standard, single-family residential use. There is already commercial zoning, as Mr. Thompson, um, mentioned, for 33,800 square feet that has not been used. So in essence, this developer is only asking for an additional 70,000 square feet of commercial space. There's only one current, single-family home that we are asking to rezon, and that is the Stroop home. If the property is developed as it is currently zoned, you could have 23 patio homes, as small as 13,000 square, excuse me, 1300 square feet, and about 34,000 square feet of commercial space. Three additional acres of commercial use, and none of the road improvements or buffers that the developer has agreed to install. You have heard from Mr. Thompson, who has gone into detail with respect to the development, so I'm only gonna touch on a couple of items, and then turn it over to Steve Vermillion. First of all, the developer has met with the surrounding neighbors on multiple occasions. The developer has committed to an 80-foot undisturbed buffer along the eastern property line, in order to shield the development from existing neighbors, because there were concerns expressed. Only 20 to 25 feet are typically required under the zoning ordinances, and yet, they have committed to over three times the required amount. Now, I'm not real good with, with distances, but I measured this room, from that wall to this wall, and it is 60 feet. So you would add an additional 20 feet to this length of this bill, of this room, in order to get a visualization of what that undisturbed buffer would grant to these property owners. The developer has even offered to give, and I said give, this 80-foot buffer to each adjoining neighbor in that area. The developer is also committed to placement of at least a six-foot masonry wall, where there are abutting residential properties on the development side of the buffer. Concerns have been raised by residents of the gated community of Heatherlock, especially as to traffic. The homeowners association initially asked for several specific things from the developer, and the developer agreed to provide all of those things at considerable expense. One of these was a dedicated left-turn lane into Heatherlock, which was agreed to. Then there was a request for the turn lane to connect into the left-turn lane at the Hoffman-Robinwood Light. The developer obtained DOT approval for that improvement. Therefore, the developer would widen Robinwood Road from Kendrick to Hoffman to five lanes. The estimated cost of these improvements exceeds a million dollars. The developer is also committed to widening Kendrick Road to three lanes to the Development Access Drive, in order to accommodate any traffic existing at those points. All of the property needed for these road improvements, both on Kendrick and Robinwood, will come from the development side of the property. As to other concerns raised with respect to increase in traffic, you'll hear from our traffic engineer, who can answer any specific questions you have in that regard. You will likely hear from some of the opponents that the requested rezoning is not in keeping with the 2025 comprehensive plan. I would remind you that a future planning document is not binding, and would quote from that plan, where it says that Gastonia 2025 was adopted by the Gastonia City Council, and is both a statement of policy and a guide to future decision-making. Unlike a zoning ordinance, the plan is not law, and it places no specific restrictions on any person or their property. There has also been some misinformation spread that the developer would not be bound by the proposed site plan. On the contrary, this is a conditional district rezoning, which means that unless there is a further request to amend the plan, which would have to come back before the planning commission and/or city council, the developer and any subsequent owner is bound by what we have presented, and the conditions that we have agreed to. Think about Robinwood Road. There is also, all, already, commercial development. From Union Road, there's a pharmacy, a gas station, an urgent care center, a veterinarian's office, a school, an athletic center, a financial advisor group, and a karate school. What we are proposing is an appropriate, high-end retail development for the site. I've also heard concerns that the development might detrimentally impact existing stores in the area, and is not needed in this area. Well, first of all, competition and capitalism is a good thing. Secondly, this should be viewed as an opportunity for progress. We can, also cannot predict the future. New development, such as this site, might spur some of the older retail centers located in the southern part of the city of Gastonia, to remodel, to retrofit, and to improve. Worst-case scenario is that there may be some vacancies created, but that's not always a bad thing. Look at the wonderful retrofit of the Old Winn Dixie as a high school for Piedmont Community Charter. Look at the old Hannaford store, that's now Toys R Us, and the old Kroger, that is now Office Depot. You should not make decisions based on what might happen, or the current inventory of available real estate. That could be short-sighted. This could happen, this will happen, if we receive your approval tonight. This development is going to be beautiful, if approved. It will be all brick, it will have outdoor seating, it will promote walkability in the area with the surrounding neighborhoods. It will have a tremendous economic impact on the city of Gastonia and Gaston County. The creation of hundreds of jobs is expected. There will be an expenditure of greater than $8 million in construction investment. That in and of itself will create jobs, and the resulting development will cause an increase in the tax value of the property for years to come. A conservative estimate by the developer is that that value would rise to $8.5 million, which would be a great benefit to both the county tax revenues and the city of Gastonia tax base. Under our current tax rates, it would generate over $116,000 in taxes on an annual basis. There will be approximately $1 million in road improvements at no cost to the city. The development will bring electric customers to the city of Gastonia, which will also serve as an additional source of revenue. There will also be other utilities that will serve as additional, uh, points of revenue. This is a multimillion-dollar economic impact, with no incentives requested or sought from the city or the county. At this time, I would like to introduce you to Steve Vermillion, a partner in the development group, who will tell you more about the development. We also have with us tonight, um, Ryan Daultery, who is the architectural designer, who can answer any questions, Jean Henkel, who is the civil engineer, and Scott Whipple, who is the senior vice president of real estate with Harris Teeter.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Council. Uh, I'm Steve Vermillion, I live at 2217 Red Fox Trail in Charlotte. We'd like to do a short presentation, just to show you what we've committed to in terms of the design on the center and the site plan, and we'll obviously be willing to answer any questions, but I wanna leave plenty of time for our traffic engineer to go through, and Jason and Nancy have done a good job. So, let me start by at least showing you first, the rendering that we have committed to do. Uh, as you can see, this is a, a center that's very similar to one we've already, we've done at Colony and Ray, and we're gonna show you some pictures, uh, later of that center, and we've committed to do exactly that architecture, uh, here. This is the site plan, that you can see, the larger building in the center is obviously the Harris Teeter building. We've agreed to do a full brick wall around the center, and leave that 80-foot buffer undisturbed, that everybody's talked about. I would like to, and I, I will point out early, or later, the, the reason we have disagreed with Jason in terms of, uh, what we do on the rear of the building. But you can see there are buildings along Robinwood, and the traffic engineer later will get into the, how the lineage works along Robinwood, and how the new stoplight works, uh, that we're talking about putting on the entrance to the center. This shows you just a pictorial of the, the buffer area, and how it runs along the entire rear of the center. Same thing, shows you the, this, the rear of the center, along with what we think is that 80-foot undisturbed buffer is gonna look like back there. Go ahead, John. This shows you the 30-foot landscaping that we intend to do all along Robinwood Road, um, and we have committed to that sort of buffer area all along the front of the center These are actual pictures of the center at Ray and Colony, and this is the exact type of architecture that we're talking about using here. This is the rear of that center, and I think it gives you a, a good idea. What we would like to commit to is just a, a brick, a back brick wall along, uh, on the Harris Teeter building, as the rest, as well as the rest of the center, and that brick wall that you see along the back of that center is exactly the same type of wall that we're talking about putting here. We just do not agree with Jason, that given that 80-foot buffer area, uh, undisturbed buffer area, that that back wall needs to have architectural elements, and just to, I'm gonna make clear that what I think Jason's talking about is, he wants that back wall of the center not only to be brick, but he wants it to look like that. And we just, we just don't feel like it's, given what we're doing back there, is necessary for us to, to, and financially, um, feasible, to do that sort of thing on the rear of the I'll turn it over to our traffic engineer now, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening, I'm Steve Blakely with Kenley Horn. Office address is 2000 South Boulevard, Suite 440, Charlotte, North Carolina 2823. We prepared the traffic impact analysis for the project, and worked with both city staff and NC DOT from the beginning of the project, um, throughout the evaluation, the development of the study parameters, as well as the concluding improvements required, uh, for the project. I'll just give you a quick overview of the, the traffic study, and then highlight the improvements, uh, with the time we have left. We started by counting the existing traffic that's on Robinwood, and Kendrick, and Hoffman. And, we counted for two hours in the morning, and two hours in the evening, and, uh, determined the highest volume within those two hours were existing traffic. Uh, inflated those to a 2015-year volume, and then, on top of that, added the trip generation, uh, for this land use, for the proposed project. And, to hit the numbers, uh, in the morning, the project would generate 371 trips in, and 298 trips out. In the PM peak hour, the evening, would generate 542 trips in, and 498 trips out. Now, in, in the planning commission meeting, there was a discussion about ADT, and the use of that number. That number is not used in the development and evaluation of traffic impacts, because, uh, factoring that number down to an hourly basis, and then determining the in-and-out volumes equates to, for this particular project, about 295 trips, which is lower than all of those numbers that I just mentioned. So, the project has evaluated the higher peak volumes for the project, okay? The traffic then, was next, distributed among the driveways of the site, and then put on the roadway system. What we have in front of you is, uh, a diagram of the overall map, uh, and, and essentially, going left to right is Robinwood Road, over to the left is Kendrick, and to the right-hand side is the intersection of Hoffman and Robinwood. So we're gonna zoom in on, uh, on this picture, around the main access point, and show you that, um, there is a new signal proposed. Uh, there is a five-lane section, so, so two southbound lanes, two northbound lanes, and a left turn, added to come into the site. added to come into the site, a right turn lane added to come into the site. Coming out would be dual left turn lanes, so two left turn lanes as well as a right. In addition to that, there are pedestrian accommodations, which would include crosswalks and pedestrian signals for getting across Robinwood as well as the main entrance. We worked to create minimization of impacts associated with the time to get traffic out of the site by putting the two left turn lanes, so we could shorten the left turn to come into the site and allow for room to put in a left turn lane to turn into Heatherlock. And there is a storage lane there that allows the traffic to go into Heatherlock to get out of the way of the Robinwood Road traffic. All right, can we go to the next slide here? All right, we're going to come back to, again, the five-lane section. As Nancy mentioned, Robinwood will be widened to five lanes from Kendrick up to Hoffman And in addition to that, the signals will be timed together as a signal, a signal system, and would even go outside of this actual study area and include Union Road. So would start at Union, come up to Kendrick through the new signal, and up to Hoffman, and time that system as a corridor. Okay, we're going to go to the next slide, which is at Kendrick. So we've zoomed in on Kendrick and are widening, again, that road to a three-lane section, so an east and westbound lane through movement, as well as a left turn lane to turn into the site, and a right turn lane into the site. In doing so, that allows an extension of the existing left turn lane to about 270 feet long. So it really extends the laneage at the intersection of Kendrick and Robinwood to make it longer. We've got the levels of service shown here. It's a little small on these screens, but if you can see that, there's a block listing at each intersection. And if we start over at Kendrick and work our way to the right, Kendrick has a level of service B operation, and the level of service, as you may know, is very similar to a report card, and it grades the intersection as to how well they work, with an A being the best and an F being the worst. So it operates as a B today and would operate as a B after the site traffic with the improvements that's being made. The proposed signal would operate level of service A. The Hoffman Intersection in the morning operates at A in both scenarios. The PM peak is really an A minus under today's conditions and a B plus after the improvements in the site traffic. I see we're out of time. I have just a couple of other points if you would like to hear those. If not, I'd be happy to answer questions.
What's the council wishes?
May I refer to him if I could? I think the traffic study is one of the most important issues that I've heard about. So I would be in favor of hearing the full traffic report.
You can have three more minutes.
Okay, thank you. Couple other points relative to safety, and that's what's in front of you currently, is showing the three-year history associated with accidents along this section of Robinwood Road. This data comes from NC DOT, who is the clearinghouse in Raleigh for maintaining the safety and accident records. So the results of that are there were three reported accidents at Kendrick, two at Heatherlock, and six at the Hoffman Intersection, and a total of three along the section in between these intersections. The rate and frequency of accidents along this section of road is 25% less, approximately 25% less than the statewide average for safety, okay? I want to go back to the Planning Commission meeting. There was also another question that came up that asked what the existing zoning's trip generation might be for comparison purposes. In that meeting, we did a quick exercise to come up with a close approximation of what that may be. Since then, we took the plan, identified the approved uses within that plan, and calculated what those actually would turn out to be. And in the morning peak hour, the trips are almost identical to what this proposed zoning is. In the PM, the evening peak hour, it still is about one-third of what this traffic would be for this site. On a daily basis, that ADT is about 8,000 trips a day, and again, that's without any Somebody had mentioned NC DOT. Mr. Holder is here. If you would like to ask questions directly of NC DOT, I'm sure Mr. Holder would be happy to answer any questions, and I'll be happy to do the same.
Questions, Councilman Kimball.
Sir, first question, were your counts done while the Hawxness School was in session or out of session?
The, yes, sir. The counts were done while school was in session. And I can give you the dates of those if you would like those dates.
The second question I have somewhat relates to traffic. You mentioned the, you're going to put, call it a storage lane or stacking lane for Heatherlock. What would be the approximate number of vehicles that would be stored or stacked there for your turn into Heatherlock?
About four.
Okay. Last question, and it kind of, you know, it curtails on the, on traffic, but also a little bit into environmental. Have we done any type of a particular study on the increases or decreases, or actually should say decreases, in air quality with the vehicles being stacked at the intersections?
No, sir, not as a part of this particular evaluation. Of course, you know, the MPO models air quality, and with the non-attainment area that's around here, that is included in, but I would suggest that in this particular one, it would not show up. But that has not been done for this level of evaluation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Council? Councilman Carl.
A couple more questions on the stacking. So with regard to Kendrick Road, okay, if you're coming down Kendrick from the right at Robinwood, how many cars are expected to be able to stack in there before they make the left-hand turn into the development?
Okay, to turn left into the development, that length is 150 feet, so it's in, it's about seven, seven cars, seven to eight cars, something like that.
And from the opposite direction in the development making the right?
That lane, I believe, is 150 feet.
That looks a little shorter. About 150 feet, you say?
150 feet, a full-width lane, and then a taper to get into that lane.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Gallagher.
You're not improving the whole of Kendrick Road. You're just improving a portion of Kendrick Road from Robinwood Road to the entrance or a little bit beyond that, so you could have a turning lane to make right-hand turns coming towards Robinwood Road?
That's correct. Yes, sir. Yeah, the three-lane section would begin at Robinwood and extend east past the driveway, and at that point, it would begin to taper, on the through-movement lanes would begin to taper back to an undivided-type roadway, but still with maintaining the right turn lane into the site.
Any other questions?
I have questions for the developer, not for transportation.
I'm going to head one more for traffic, too.
Go ahead.
Sir, have you done any ancillary counts down on Union of what might be your traffic projections for that particular intersection as you anticipate additional traffic flow coming up to the new site?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Kimball. I mean, Carl, excuse me.
Sure. These would be some questions, again, for Mr. Vermillion.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. What specific criteria were used to select this particular site?
The truth is, we do a tremendous amount of work with Harris Teeter, and their chairman of the board and their president drove down here and said, "That's where we want to be."
So that was your specific criteria? Okay. Talk to the man, huh?
Given that, they do a lot of studies in terms of income levels and sites and where they should be, and they pick them, and they say, "This is A-plus, this is B-minus, this is C-plus." And they came down, "That's where we want to be." Scott Whipple might be able to give you a little more information on that. He's the senior VP of Real Estate.
Okay. I'm glad Steve made that seem so easy. It's not. Scott Whipple, 10-609 Letter, Charlotte. What Steve doesn't know is we studied probably five other intersections prior to bringing the president, and the chairman down here did demographic studies, did analysis of each customer in each of those trade areas, and it was with a lot of study and information that the president and the chairman said, "We want to be there." So, not quite as easy as just pointing at the site.
Let me ask this, and this would be sort of a follow-up question to that. So, and you might not have this answer because you're not the chairman of the Harris Teeter organization, but when Harris Teeter, you know, markets, what are they expecting the draw to be in terms of, you know, a mile radius to the store?
Our penetration within a mile of the store will probably equal about 50% of our sales, and the rest of that will come from two miles and beyond. Most of that will come within two miles.
Okay. And then this would be another question, kind of specific to a grocery store, and that would be, would you have any idea what the typical head count would be? We got some idea of trips in, trips out, and I guess that may reflect head counts, too, but, you know, any kind of a head count that this store would produce on a daily basis?
Steve, actually, our traffic engineer may be able to speak to that, too, but it's average customers about 20,000 a week.
Okay. So that should correlate to these trips with one to two to three people per vehicle, I guess, something like that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
One question. Sir?
Councilman Gallagher.
I'm not sure if you're going to have an answer to this one, but my question is on deliveries. If this goes through, deliveries, are they going to be coming down Kendrick Road, or would they be coming down Hoffman Road and going up the improved Kendrick Road to get to the facility?
I think I can answer that for you. What we would agree to do, given some of the concerns I think that some people have expressed, is number one, limit the deliveries to be from 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night. And in addition to that, we would agree, there's been some talk about, they believe, I don't believe that the trucks will ever use Kendrick Road because of that main entrance there, but we will agree to put a headache bar across that Kendrick Road entrance so that none of those trucks could possibly use Kendrick entrance.
One other question, sir. Is there a certain hour of time the store is going to be open? Is it going to be open from 6:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night or 12:00? Or is it 24 hours?
That's a good question. It was asked at one of the neighborhood meetings, it'd be a 24-hour store. It will not be. Typical hours would be 7:00 to 11:00.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Councilman Kimball.
Several questions. I believe probably Mr. Vermillion would be able to field these questions. First off, what is the, what is the feeling of the Kroger folks on this? You know, it seems like a little bit, one of the elephants kind of was in the room. I saw a lot of news coverage that Harris Teeter was recently purchased, so I think that, you know, maybe to get a little background, and I know, I believe you indicated that the president of Harris Teeter drove by and said, "That's the spot," and I'm just kind of wondering if Mr. Kroger feels the same way, or, you know, where we stand with that, because it's obviously, when we're kind of changing horses, so to speak, in midstream, that's a concern of what the buy-in of the new corporate owner is going to feel towards your specific property and also Gastonia as a whole. So is there someone here to speak to that?
I can speak to that, and Kroger is going to be our new holding company if the merger goes through, and, you know, the acquisition, it may take a year. In the meantime, this thing will keep moving on. We will continue to do business as Harris Teeter under the current management. They're looking at that as a reason to pay a premium for Harris Teeter. They love what Harris Teeter brings to the market. It does things for the Kroger group. The Kroger group does things for us. I think that the relationship will be one that fits both companies. We're excited about it. We think that in today's competitive environment, it allows us to come to market more competitively. They have said that, you know, your capital plan is your capital plan. I've worked for them before, and each of their Kroger marketing areas has their own capital plan, and they execute their own decisions. They do ask for capital from that group, but in the acquisition agreement, our capital has already been pre-approved.
Okay. I guess part of the other, the tail end of that question comes from the fact that I believe it was, oh, approximately a year, 14 months ago, we saw an exodus of the Harris Teeter brand from Gastonia. There were quotes, maybe probably, or maybe not properly attributed, that we were too rural in this area, or did not support the brand, and we, what has been the change of heart, other than obviously the Kroger Corporation?
You know, I'm not aware of those comments or who made those comments, but Gastonia fits our profile completely. We looked primarily at education level, and this particular area is outstanding. We are happy to have the opportunity to come back. The Exodus was a trade with the Lowe's Corporation, and we didn't want to leave, but in the trade, that was important, and we came up with stores that they could also have in that transaction in Gastonia. I would rather have worked out a trade to have their store. It didn't work out that way.
A last question I have. We've heard a lot about upscale, and certainly that one down in Charlotte sure looks like a wonderful, wonderful place to shop. I want to kind of get a little bit of a definition from you or your team on, no real clean way to say this, what do we have now in Gastonia if we're looking to make things upscale? What do you consider our shopping venues at this juncture when you look throughout the area and what you purport to bring forward with the new shopping area?
Well, I think Harris Teeter, people are familiar with it from Charlotte, know the difference in some of the stores we have in Charlotte and what we had here in this town. We had smaller facilities, you know, in a larger 53,000-square-foot store proposed here. We can add more features, better wine department, better fresh foods, better produce, and all of that adds to that upscale experience, and more prepared foods offers a bigger variety. So those are some of the things that you see that are different.
Thank you.
Councilman Gallagher.
Sir, Fred Morgenthau, the president and chief operating officer for, I guess Kroger, or is it for Harris Teeter?
For Harris Teeter.
Sent out a message after the proposed merger was announced, and he said that while details are still being finalized, we can tell you that the name will remain Harris Teeter. He also went on to say, "Rest assured, it is the desire of both Kroger and Harris Teeter to only make Harris Teeter better through this merger for many years to come." Does that mean that Kroger is looking to have Harris Teeter to be their flagship and may change some of the Kroger stores to Harris Teeters and to do battle with Publix?
I really can't speak to whether they're going to do that or not at this point in the juncture, but both sides, when they go through an acquisition like this, look at best practices, and they learn from each other, and I'm sure they'll learn from us, we'll learn from them. There'll be simple things, buying paper bags that may be, you know, .03 cents a bag cheaper that could add up to millions of dollars in savings. I mean, those are, those are real things that can be passed on to the consumer. I think we all want, you know, lower prices and we want better product, and I think that in today's environment, it's tougher to do that. This helps us do that more competitively.
But Kroger's not coming in to make Harris Teeter like a Piggly Wiggly, right?
No, not to my, not to my knowledge. They love, they love Harris Teeter, and I think you guys will continue to see Harris Teeter be managed by the same group and with the same philosophy. The only difference would be that hopefully we'll see more buying power and some other things that in the back room and behind the scenes give us more efficiencies and just make it better for us to offer a product that the consumer likes. just make it better for us to offer a product that the consumer likes.
Thank you.
I have one question. Your employees, jobs is something that this community is looking for, and with a 9.6 unemployment average, how many full-time benefited employees does Harris Teeter have or would have for a store this size?
A store this size would have over 100 employees. Over half of those, about 55%, would be full-time with an average wage of almost $15. The part-timers would have an average wage of about $9, and there would be a couple, probably three managers with average wages of about $66,000, $70,000.
And what is your intent as far as employees coming from Gaston County? Are you talking about transferring people into Gaston County?
I would imagine we have a lot of people from our two existing stores that would probably love to come back, but we would always hire mostly from the local areas. It's much easier. Nobody wants to commute too far to work, and I think the basis here of qualified people should be strong.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Ms. Craig, if I could address that one question, that does not include the out-parcels nor the other stores that would flank Harris Teeter as to employment. Okay?
Right. That would just be Harris Teeter in and of itself.
Correct. And I think that Mr. Vermillion wanted to address either Mr. Gallagher or Mr. Kimball's question about, I'm trying to remember which one it was. Anyway, the, yeah, the high retail, the definition of high quality.
Upscale.
Yeah.
It's difficult, it's difficult in terms of the smaller shop retail to describe it. The only way I can, could do it is to show it to you in terms of what we've done in other markets, and show you the quality of the restaurants that we put into these types centers, the quality of the general retail merchandisers, and the quality of the retailers themselves. So, it's almost one of those things that's indescribable, but I can show it to you, and you get a real good idea once you look at it, what I'm talking about.
Thank you, sir. That was my question. I guess, this is where I am a little bit, maybe a little bit confused, and hopefully you can enlighten me a little bit. Do we have, when we're talking upscale, or just as you had explained, do we have, like, letters of intent or interest or anything from any of these shops that we're kind of alluding to back and forth that would reinforce kind of where our discussion's going?
No, we really, we don't. We, it's really difficult to get the smaller tenants to commit to anything until they see it on the ground. They've been through this with developers over the years, telling them they were going to do this, this, and this, and every time they go down the road and nothing happens, that it's a waste of time for them, so it's just almost impossible. The only thing, the only way I could look at it is to tell you that it's going to be the type of tenants that Harris Teeter typically attracts into their centers, which is certainly an upper-scale type tenant, and there are a number of those that follow Harris Teeter along in terms of almost every location they go into as a result of the volumes they know that a Harris Teeter does as opposed to some of the other supermarket brands.
So, it would be safe, I guess it's safe to say that you have some type of a contract with Harris Teeter? If this was approved, they would be the headliner, so to speak, or the Kroger folks? Is that correct, or?
Yes, I think Scott will confirm that they are certainly going to be a part of this center when we develop it.
So, again, you have something, is there something in writing, or is there a letter of intent, or is there something from Kroger, or we're not along?
No, we really have not done a lease form and would not do them until we get through this zoning process. We do have a letter of intent that we've been through with them and gone through the numbers and talked through those, but no lease form is done yet.
And that's also been, I'm sorry, Dave, and that's something that the Kroger folks are kind of aware of, and this is in the mix with them, and they're aware of its existence, or?
I'm not sure they are, but we've been told specifically that Kroger, that Harris Teeter's going to run their own operation, that the President and the Chairman are going to remain the same, and they're going to make those decisions.
Got you. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
Colonel.
So, we were talking a little bit earlier about trips in, trips out, and I think we were referring to trips in and trips out of the grocery store. Is that not correct? When the traffic counts that we were referring to? Was that referring to what the draw of the grocery store would bring in and out of the development?
No, sir, that's the, that's the total development.
That's total development?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All tenants fully, you know, outfitted, up and running, so?
That's correct.
Okay. I guess a follow-up to that, which would be more specific to the developer, would be with the tenant mix. We understand that the Harris Teeter product would be drawing from the local immediate area, 50% or more of the customer base, and then within one to two miles, we think that, again, another 25 to 50% of the customer base is going to come in from this area. What about these other tenants? Because they're probably a mix of restaurants and retail and specialty shops and things like that. What kind of a geographic radius do they tend to draw from?
Depending on what type they are, it can be anywhere from, generally, anywhere from one to five miles would be typical. If you got into, for example, if we were able to talk someone like a PF Chang into going in who's a specific restaurant, probably a one-store town for them, Gastonia's probably would be just one store, they're going to draw from 10 miles or more. But generally, it's going to be about a five-mile draw.
So, a lot of it depends on population density, too.
Density, who the tenant is, what the use is, it varies.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now, the opponents will have their 20 minutes, and we will add three additional minutes to that since we gave the applicant three additional minutes. So, you will have 23 minutes. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is David Kenny. I live at 1331 Heatherlock Drive and have for the past 23 years. The group before you this evening is here to speak in opposition of the rezoning. At this point, I would like all those in opposition to please stand for counsel. Thank you very much.
Elmo On, please. Thank you.
Just a quick point. Are we using other, are there other people out there, too?
Pardon me?
Are there people in other rooms?
In the overflow rooms, there weren't when we opened the council meeting.
Okay. Just wondering. Okay. Wasn't sure. Thank you. Sorry, sir.
And that would be the others also. Excuse me, I did not realize that we had more people here also. Thank you. We have three members that will share a lot of time to present our opposition of this rezoning. If council approves this rezoning, you will start the transformation of this residential community that we all live in. They want to build a grocery store, 27 additional storefronts, and over 700 parking spaces. The proposed tenant is Harris Teeter, however, no contract has been signed. We've heard about high-end restaurants such as PF Chang, however, there is no commitment on these types of restaurants. We were initially told that there would be no fast food restaurants, however, now we've decided there will be two. One thing about the restaurants, we will be able to get a bagged lunch with a straw sticking out of it. We were initially told by Mr. Vermillion that the entrance at Kendrick Road would be primarily used for trucks to alleviate the added traffic on Robinwood Road. Now MBP says the trucks will enter and exit from Robinwood Road. I'm definitely confused, as I'm sure council is, on this issue. The bottom line is, there's going to be plenty of extra trucks in the area. Also, I really can't see trucks winding their way through this busy parking lot when they have a straight entrance off of Kendrick long-term. The development group is requesting the rezoning of 20 acres outlined in blue. The group has been acquiring far more property than the 20 acres we are talking about this evening. The developer is negotiating to buy the property that's in red. A right-of-way for the entrance off of Kendrick has been purchased from the parcel with an X mark. The developer also has options on the property on the other, property on the other side of Kendrick. These parcels are marked in blue and pink. 30 acres is already under MPV's control at this point.
Madam Mayor, pro temp. Mr. Kenny, we can't see the property in red. You may want to just look at the monitor and make sure, there you go.
Thank you. That would be what we call the Yandel property. Thank you very much. Okay, how did it just get kicked off? Thank you. MBP released this site plan for the property on the other side of Kendrick Road a while back. The plan shows a big box store, six out-parcels, and a building with a drive-through. The total is approximately 70,000 square feet of commercial space and about 270 parking spaces. If this type of plan is developed on these parcels of land, the total commercial area on both sides of Kendrick will be approximately 180,000 square feet of commercial buildings and nearly 100,000, excuse me, and nearly 1,000 parking spots in this residential area. It's a little hard to see, but the red outlined properties are all the properties that will be affected if this rezoning is allowed. Rest assured, if you pass this, the commercial creep will follow, and the developers will be back here asking for more rezoning. The neighborhood will forever be changed. The C3 classification that has been talked about this evening has a wide range of permitted uses. In the plan submitted last Thursday, the developers have agreed to exclude certain businesses. As you're aware of, these businesses can be added back at a later date. I would like to pass up a complete list of C3 uses that is approved in Gastonia at this point. At our first meeting, the developers spoke about being part of our community. Let us be clear, this is not a local Gastonia developer that we are dealing with here, ladies and gentlemen. They have no ties to our community. MBP develops property, period. They do not own, nor do they manage these properties. The development could be sold before the first tenant ever moves in. This, along with the fact that the out-parcels can be subdivided from the property and sold, leaves our community with multiple owners, investors, tenants, and management companies with many, with many very different agendas. As a real estate broker, locating a shopping center in the middle of an existing residential neighborhood is not fair to the current homeowners. We have purchased and invested millions of dollars in this area. Homeowners in Gastonia need to know that local government will protect their real estate purchases by following zoning plans that are in place. Fortunately, because of the work of our community leaders and this council, we have a plan. The 2025 Plan for the Growth of Gastonia will guide our communities now and into the future. According to the 2025 Plan, commercial urbanization is not the community's best interest. Let me get this focused out here a little bit. Go the other way for me, please. There you go. Thank you. Additionally, the proposed rezoning lacks widespread community support. As you are aware, a protest petition was filed against this proposed rezoning. By law, 5% of the adjacent property owners must sign that petition for it to be valid. I would like you to please look at the overwhelming majority of blue-marked properties that have signed this protest petition in opposition. Most of the other parcels are owned by people with direct financial ties to this property that did not sign. We know city staff has worked hard on this project and have been very diligent in their responsibilities, and we thank them for this. Even so, it is important to note that the staff was unable to give an opinion regarding the rezoning to the planning board. As was said earlier, this is very unusual. When we attended the planning board meeting, citizens opposed that this project overfilled City Hall. The fire marshal closed the doors and residents waited outside. After listening to the residents and developers, and after much discussion, the planning board was unable to recommend the rezoning. The 2025 Plan adopted in 2011 clearly shows the property should remain residential. A precedent has been set by council as far as commercial development in this area. Council rejected a request from a commercial development in Robinson Oaks, a subdivision across from Robinwood Lake. This site is only a half a mile from the site that we are discussing this evening. Current owners of Robinson Oaks have started building residential housings. In closing, the vast majority of homeowners do not want this commercial development. City staff and the planning board were unable to recommend this rezoning. The city has set a precedence to say no to commercial development in this residential area, and is in a definite conflict with the 2025 Plan. Please say no to this rezoning request. Thank you for your time and your service.
Oh, I'm sorry. Question?
Yeah, I see the, yeah. I have one question, sir.
Yes, sir.
The planning board, didn't they pass it, the rezoning 5-3?
Depending on how we're looking at it, we had, I think you went, I think that the, excuse me, the person that spoke from the planning board, the veterinarian?
You said 5-3, right?
3-5, 5-3, which, depending on how that was actually?
Three were opposed to it, and five were for it. That's why it's before us, right?
They didn't have enough, there was not a big enough percentage for them. It still was coming in front of you, one way or the other. I mean, if either one of us lost, we probably, I mean, we could have appealed to you, but no. Basically, can we say it was a split decision?
No, 3-3 is a split decision.
Why?
I mean, it was a decision, five people were for it, three were against it.
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Madam Mayor, pro temp, council and staff, I'm Don H. Renfro from 1625 Heatherlock Drive. I've been elected to come before you as an old networking guy to talk to you about the most interesting subject, numbers, and more specifically, the numbers that relate to traffic in this proposal. Please bear with me, I'm new to this thing, but I'll try to make this exciting, interesting, and hopefully informative.[1635.86][1635.86](laughter) First, a little background. The establishment of the number of vehicles or passes through a stretch of roadway, engineers use several types of devices to actually count the passing traffic. They like to do this over a stretch of time, because as you know from experience, traffic ebbs and flows. Now, NC DOT prefers to record traffic over a minimum of five days. This, they believe, gives them a clear picture of the actual amount of traffic at a given location along a roadway, as opposed to selecting individual hour slots. Or, and our own city engineering department uses the same protocol anytime they do any kind of traffic study. I think you'll agree, this is a very sound approach. A study by NC DOT in 1993 established a traffic count of 14,500 along Robinwood Road. This was entered into the record of the Planning Commission meeting in May 9. This study was done during the timeframe, Robinwood Road was transitioning from a two-lane road to a four-lane road, and it was the same timeframe as the approval of the patio home for the 2,000-square-foot limited housing that was to occupy that space. This map represents a study by NC DOT done in 2012 indicating a recorded number of vehicles a day to be 13,000 at the location, along the stretch of Robinwood. In your packet, you have the developer's traffic report. On page five, you'll see the number of current traffic as 13,000, but there's no source given for that report or date given. On page 10, you will see the number 576, which appears to represent 2% of background or pass-by traffic expected through this area. Now, let's look at this number from the same page. You'll notice that the number of additional trips, the number with the caption "new net external trips," that's for the entire development, full build-out, everybody occupied, the trips we might expect through this section of Robinwood Road to be 14,188. Let's accept that this will indeed be the number of new trips through the area, specifically on Robinwood Road. on Robinwood Road, and use that number to project the future load. If we use the 2012 NC DOT number, that is twenty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-eight total trips along this roadway. If we use the developer's number, that is twenty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-eight total trips along the roadway. This excludes the background number five-seventy-six will accept it. By the developer's own admission, and as stated in their traffic study, given the nature of the land uses proposed, the overall trip generation calculated for this site is considered conservative. Now, consider this. Our city engineering department recently completed a seventy-two-hour study of the traffic on Hoffman Road just east of the intersection with Robinwood Road and at the entrance of Planters Ridge. Results indicated that in just two of the four lanes, the daily average traffic count was four thousand five hundred. If you just double that number to account for all four lanes, and remember it is outside the area the developer considers is directly affected, that's nine thousand trips per day. Use just half of the new net external trips number, because not every vehicle will continue down Hoffman Road, and you're over sixteen thousand vehicles a day. Now, let's take some break from the number. Note that the developer is only presenting projections related directly to their proposal. Planters Ridge traffic was not addressed, St. Mary's traffic was not addressed, Randolph Park traffic was not addressed. Kendrick Road traffic gets assigned to thirty-five percent value, is an increase to what would appear to be around eight thousand seven hundred trips. But nothing is said regarding loading away from the development. Free to lane is ignored. Heatherlock, with one hundred and twelve residences, one entrance in and out, is totally ignored and has completely disappeared from several of the site plans submitted by the developer. The five lanes supposedly providing easy access for all didn't come up until those issues were raised. Nothing has been said regarding the total area of this development, which will likely include the fourteen acres to the west of the Kendrick intersection, which are already zoned commercial, or much of it's already zoned commercial, is already under contract. This is not included in the traffic study. Traffic lights. Note that on the drawing, the distance between A and B along a stretch of Franklin Boulevard, you will recognize the Hess gas station, the Jack-in-the-Box, as well as the Sam's Lowe's hardware entrance is about a thousand feet. Distances between B and C you'll recognize is about sixteen hundred feet. That's between Sam's hardware entrance and that same entrance as before. Now, look at this. This represents the location of lights existing and proposed along the stretch of Robinwood Road. A is the Robinwood-Hoffman intersection. C is the Robinwood-Kendrick intersection. B represents the new light at the main entrance to this proposed development. The distance between A and B is approximately a thousand feet. The distance between B and C is about eleven hundred feet. Please keep these numbers in mind for the rest of the evening. Remember that the range of traffic counts from before, around twenty-seven thousand using the NC DOT and the developer's numbers, then think about this. On their 2012 count maps, NC DOT indicates recording twenty-one thousand trips along Franklin Boulevard at the entrance to the Acres Shopping Center. NC DOT recorded twenty-two thousand trips along South New Hope Road at about the entrance to the Old Orthopedic Hospital. NC DOT recorded twenty-five thousand trips at about the midpoint of the Cox Road between Franklin Boulevard and the bridge over I-85. Close your eyes for a moment. Now, put at least two limited-site-distance entrances into this mix. One that has one thousand documented entries and exits every day, and has seen eight serious accidents in three years, per the local police records. One that offers, let's look at one that offers three seconds to make a determination if it is safe to enter traffic before the oncoming traffic is in the door of your car. Put in a school, put in a church. As you open your eyes, you will see that these numbers say the development of this type in this place is now and in the future not in the best interest of the people who have invested and are now living in these surrounding neighborhoods. Numbers say you must vote no. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Jay Heffner?
Thank you, madam Mayor, if I may, and council members. My name is Jay Heffner. My wife, Millie, and I live at thirty-four seventeen Candlewick Way in Planters Ridge subdivision. We've lived there for fourteen years. We chose Planters Ridge to purchase our home for its small, quiet neighborhood and its peaceful Robinwood and Hoffman roads, leading to, into, and from several driving directions. I'm here to request that you vote no on the approximately twenty-acre tract of land to be rezoned to commercial use at the intersection of Kendrick and Robinwood Roads, which would allow for the proposed shopping center to be built. I retired last year, 2012, as Gaston County's Director of Revenue, meaning that I was county assessor and county tax collector, in charge of the tax department. I held the same position in Lincoln County since nineteen eighty-six, before accepting the position that was offered to me by Gaston County in nineteen ninety-nine to take over its tax department. As county assessor, I was responsible for the appraisal of all residential homes, commercial, and industrial properties in Gaston County. After arriving in Gaston County in nineteen ninety-nine, I was tasked with administering the 2003 countywide reappraisal, and then administering the 2007 reappraisal of all properties up to and including the year 2012 in the county, using the 2007 Schedule of Values as approved by the county commissioners. It has been stated that the developer will invest approximately eight and a half million dollars in the proposed shopping center. It's been my observation for over twenty-five years in the assessing business that the Gaston County Tax Department will not be able to assess newly-built shopping centers, but at approximately seventy-five to ninety percent of their investment. We simply cannot reach the total cost that they have in soft costs, engineering fees, architects, et cetera. In this case, seventy-five percent of the investment would amount to a taxable value of six-point-three-seven-five million. Ninety percent would be seven-six-five-oh million. So if you used seven million as in-between times county's, the city's tax rate of fifty-three cents per hundred-dollar value, that would amount to thirty-three thousand seven hundred and ten dollars in tax. And if the tax office valued the proposed shopping center even at eight million dollars, that would amount to forty-two thousand four hundred dollars. The eleven patio homes on three acres of land in St. Mary's on Kendrick subdivision, which is right almost adjacent to the proposed shopping center, is valued, all the homes together, valued at four-point-four million times the tax rate, they raise about twenty-three thousand dollars in tax. The current proposed shopping center is already zoned to allow twenty-three patio homes to be built. So if you built twenty-three similar patio homes as those in St. Mary's, which, as I said, are already allowed, the annual tax receipts to the city would have a taxable value of nine-point-two million and would raise forty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Therefore, twenty-three patio homes would bring in six-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars more tax revenue, even using the eight-million-dollar valuation of the shopping center. So twenty-three patio homes like St. Mary's would bring you more tax revenue than the shopping center. If you compared the patio homes in Randolph Park, which is across the street from St. Mary's, once again, very much adjacent to the shopping center, they total five million dollars in value for the current fourteen homes that are already built there. And if you said that times the tax rate and multiplied it out by twenty-three homes, or similar to Randolph Park homes, that would amount to forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in total tax revenue, or eighteen hundred and fifty dollars more using the eight-million-dollar proposed or possible assessed value for the shopping center. So those are the numbers for brick and mortar, and I know council members, since I was under county commissioners for twenty-five years, are very interested in bricks and mortar. Well, simply put it in homes, twenty-three patio homes. And you don't have to go to all this shopping center that's going to bring in so many thousands of cars more. Our traffic, and once again, I live in Planters Ridge, we can't stand for any more traffic coming in front of our entranceway. We'll just not be able to get out. I've talked to Mr. Boston, he says at current right now, they have no plans of turning that light, those lights are red for us, they leave it on green. So once you pull out a Harris teeter, it's green, baby, all the way. Right in front of our subdivision. So it's a streak of cars going down through there with no stop, because they don't want to stop it. They're at the intersection of Hoffman and Robinwood, because they're looking for this traffic to pass right on through to get on over to I-85, I guess. Lastly, the chief commercial appraiser, and I, he's appraised this county since nineteen eighty-six, has advised me, and I totally agree, this would be the only shopping center in Gaston County that would be plopped down in the middle of a residential area. All the other ones, they come up on their own. They're commercial property that gets built. If some homes want to build nearby, so be it, or patio homes, or condos, or whatever. But this is the only one, and your 2025 Plan, you know, said leave these patio homes. And I would implore you to do that, to go by that. It's just not right to have all of us residents, if some have been there for thirty-five and forty years. We didn't move in there to get beside a shopping center. We moved to get to a neighborhood, a small neighborhood. A lot of us know each other in the various neighborhood subdivisions there, and that's the way we like it. So that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Questions?
You made several references to the twenty-three patio homes.
Yes.
And building those. Do you have the name of the builder that wants to build those?
No. Those are proposed.
And how long's that land been for sale?
I don't know.
Quite a while.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sometimes people don't want to pay what someone else wants for their property.
Mr. Heffner, I'm looking at this map that we have, and I was just curious where your property is located relative to the development.
I'm towards the end of Planters Ridge in the cul-de-sac at the end of Candlewick Way.
Candlewick Way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which goes all the way down the center of...
Okay. Your property doesn't actually border the...
No, it does not touch it.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Well, you're just real good with numbers.
That was my job.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Now, we will go to citizens' recognition.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask for one thing. Did the clerk get the copies that Mr. Kenny and Mr. Renfro showed on the Elmo? Because she needs those for the public record. All right, if you can make sure she gets those.
Before we go into the citizens' recognition, because that's going to be very lengthy, let's take a five-minute break, and we will come back at ten till eight.
And Dottie and I sat in his living room and he said, "Bob and Dottie, they call arm bones and foot bones and leg bones the same thing in Boston, Greenville, Augusta, or Gastonia. It all boils down to where you want to live." Well, we chose Gastonia because that was where we wanted to live. That's where we wanted to raise our family. And, you know, Gastonia continues to have many of these same values. Good public schools. We have outstanding hospital and medical community. You represent a very sound government. And we also have many intimate neighborhoods and many really good people. And we oppose this development because of several reasons. And a lot has been said about the traffic on Hoffman Road and the difficulty in getting in and out of Planters Ridge. One thing that they have not discussed is the somewhat unusual geography there. We've got a blind left curb and we have a very limited sight distance. It scares me that he says that they're going to coordinate the traffic lights all the way from Union Road. Geez, this just gives them a green light all the way across with a lot more speed. And the second is the disruption of our established neighborhoods. This is residential property. It's not designed or designated to be a commercial development. It's going to severely modify our daily lives. So I really appreciate Mr. Jim Gallagher's visit to our neighborhood and our home last week. We walked along the property and we discussed some of our concerns. And Dottie explained to him that Gastonia really doesn't need any more grocery stores in this area. We have five in a two-mile area. So council members, please realize that rezoning this will dismantle and upend our existing residential neighborhoods and really is in direct opposition to the plan that you adopted for 2025. Thank you very much.
Joel Goodrich?
Thank you. My name, excuse me, my name is Joel Goodrich. I live at 1213 Heatherlock Drive. Thirty-three years ago, when I came to this area, I was encouraged to move to Charlotte. Gail, my wife, and I looked around and decided to locate in Gastonia, in the area we live in now, because we prefer a smaller community, quieter community, and did not want to be around excess traffic and clutter from commercial development. So we located here to raise our children, and we're certainly glad we did. First, I want to say I appreciate your service. Appreciate all of our community leaders who work very hard at running our city. We do need positive growth. We need well-planned, positive growth. That's a copy of the map for our area and the comprehensive 2025 plan. The other night I had, well, the other afternoon and night, I sat down and read the 2025 plan, 327 pages. A lot of work went into that plan. A lot of taxpayer money went in to putting that plan together. Obviously, it was put together by many intelligent and qualified people. It's a good plan, but the most important thing, it is a plan, a guide by which to make sound decisions in developing our communities. A great American philosopher once said, Yogi Berra, "If you don't know where you're going, you'll end up somewhere else." And if we let this plan pass, we'll end up somewhere else. We can either plan and work our plan to develop our communities, or we can allow outsiders to come in and shake Gastonia how they please. It's our choice. Our being here tonight on this issue brings to question the credibility of our system. At a time when credibility is a big question, from Washington all the way to local governments. In October 2012, a local developer presented an almost identical plan to develop, rezone the same property. It was rejected, as it should have been. And of course, I learned from Mr. Thompson's comments tonight.
Mr. Goodrich, I'm sorry, but your time is up. If you can close it down.
Okay. But I learned from this comment tonight that it never got passed to staff, to the planning commission. So obviously, from Mr. Thompson's comment, there was a consensus on the staff. One might like to believe that it didn't meet the criteria for the 2025 plan, or maybe some staff members thought could see the traffic and congestion and safety issues that it would bring. Less than six months later, the plan that we're questioning tonight came up. And-
Mr. Goodrich, I'm going to have to stop you. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm right in the middle of a point, a very important-
Well, if you could just make that one point, then we can move on. Thank you.
The point is, we're tonight talking about another developer with the same proposal, exact same proposal. What's happened in six months? How could this be? How could we reject one at that point? And it was not okay, and it didn't meet our 2025 plan. But today, we're entertaining the idea of passing it. Neither item meets our 2025 plan. And so tonight, I ask that each of you listen to our neighbors-
Thank you.
And reject this plan, please.
Lamar Stroup?
My name's Lamar Stroup. I live at 3110 Robin Wood Road, and I'm certainly not a public speaker. And I don't know, I don't really know, I didn't come prepared to speak tonight. I'm a loud mouth. I love to talk, and I love people. But I don't know what I'm going to say, except I'm a licensed real estate broker in North and South Carolina. I've lived in this property on Robin Wood Road for 47 years. So you guys sure do make me feel old, the way you guys are talking. Like, you've been to all these places all this time, and I remember when Heatherlock was built, and I remember when Planters Ridge was built. Tommy Ball was an outstanding friend of mine and built the Heatherlock. And I gave the city a piece of property. I didn't give them anything. They paid me for it. But they took some of my property for another road, for another lane of traffic on Robin Wood Road. And I'm so blessed to live in Gastonia and to be a part of what's taken place in that general area. But like I say, I've been in real estate since 1958 in North and South Carolina, a licensed broker. I've sold a lot of houses in Gastonia. Nothing is permanent. The only time you're going to find permanent residence is when we leave here. God calls us home, then we go to our permanent residence. What we've done in the past and what we, how great we are and what we've accomplished and all, really doesn't mean a hill of beans. It's where we're going. I've moved a bunch. Me and I got two kids, a boy and a girl, and a wife I've had for 57 years and one marriage. And I don't ever remember being single, but I've lived in, I've lived in a lot of places in Gastonia, and I've sold a lot of places, so I'm familiar with Gastonia. But it's a great place, and I'm honored to be a part of Gastonia, to just to have the friendship. The Lord's blessed me, he's put me in touch with a lot of outstanding people that have led me and prospered and tutored me and caused me to be who I am today, the accomplishments in my life. But anyway, I am certain, if I had known John Bridgeman, who's a friend of mine, John loaned me some money to sell a house. I sold an SO service station on the corner of Second and Marietta Street. And John was in the banking business, and he had a lot of money, represented a lot of money, and he let my people borrow some money so I could make a transaction. And I sold the SO station because of John. So we've had a friendship for 25, 30, 40 years, a long, long time. And that's been my life, is that kind of relationships. But-
Mr. Stroup, I'm sorry, the red light's on.
I'm out of here.
David Jenkins?
Yes, sir.
I'd just about give him 30 seconds of my time to keep going. My name's David. My name's David Jenkins. My wife and I live at 3340 Robin Wood Road, just down from Kendrick. My wife and I want to make sure that our voices are heard in support for this plan that we've heard. Where we live currently, there are no guarded gated communities. We don't have a current HOA establishment. We are simply and truly residents of Robin Wood Road, on Robin Wood Road. Our house has been in my family for two generations, and that is about 47 years since my father, rest his soul, moved there with my family. We saw a two-lane road go to four rather quickly, and we liked it. However, over the years, we've yet to see any kind of quality upscale growth in that community. This is our chance, in our opinion. This is our chance. I do work in Charlotte. I do see and have seen some of the developers' work. It is classy. It is high-scale. It's cozy at the same time. It is nice. Currently, well, of course, Ms. Pascal mentioned a lot of small businesses that are there in this area. We have a church, dry cleaner, karate school, veterinarian, urgent care center. We have a school, an athletic club, and also a florist spread throughout the community. Now, we have a wonderful opportunity to work with a reputable developer, one who wants to bring an upscale shopping center to this community. Businesses that we all know will bring what hopes to be 400 jobs to our community, increase tax, utility revenue, which is what this city needs, as you guys well know. Now, the developers accommodated surrounding communities by reducing square footage, not allowing convenience stores, changing and adding traffic patterns to accommodate, adding buffers that I've never heard of, 80-feet buffers, which is really good, and just wants to help this town grow. And I thank you for that. In addition, an online survey that I saw in the Gazette, approximately 75% were in favor of this shopping center. That took, you know, participation in this, in this thing. We want to see this city grow, and we care about its quality. We know that we voted for city council members that have this city's best interest at heart, and we thank you for that. We know you're a council that won't be intimidated by negativity or by fear-bongering.
Mr. Jenkins, the red light's on.
Well, that's all right. I've got one more sentence. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to speak tonight, and we ask that you vote yes for this, in favor for opportunity for this city. Thank you very much.
The next folks that will be speaking will be Bob Ferguson, Dr. John Warlick, Nancy Garrett, Steve Blakely, and, oh, take him off? Barbara Yarborough. If y'all would come to the podium, please. Go ahead.
My name is Bob Ferguson, and my wife and I live at 3401 Candlewick Way in the Planters Ridge subdivision. The rear of my property joins the tract of land that is being considered for rezoning. I am opposed to this, as are the majority of the residents in my subdivision, who have signed the petition urging you to vote against this proposal. Tonight, you have heard or will hear many reasons as to why this property should not be rezoned, any one of which should be enough to cast a no vote. But tonight, I would like to spend my time describing the effects my neighbors and I would encounter if you approved this rezoning. First, and this has been mentioned before, is the danger we currently encounter when we attempt to exit our neighbor, our neighborhood. When exiting Planters Ridge on the Hoffman Road, the curvature of the road prevents us from seeing traffic, both from the right and the left, until the cars are already on top of us. If this shopping center is built, this will add significantly to the traffic load, and we will literally be taking our life in our own hands when trying to turn left out of our neighborhood. Next, let's talk about the aesthetics of this from our neighborhood. We've all seen the beautiful architecture of the proposed shopping center when viewed from Robin Wood Road. But the view we will have is a view of dumpsters, loading docks, and some type of masonry wall. The developers have agreed to an 80-foot buffer, and Ms. Pascal gave you an inside perspective of that distance. Think about this. The distance from home plate to first base is 90 feet. So if you look at it from an outside perspective, that's a distance that a major leaguer can run in four seconds. So from an outside perspective, and especially in the wintertime, that buffer is not going to prevent you from being able to see right through our neighborhood. While my neighbors to the north will have dumpsters, loading docks, and some type of wall in their backyard, I will have the detention pond, designed to catch the overflow of the water during heavy downpours. It's not been made clear whether this detention pond is a dry type or a wet type, but either way, it could be a breeding place for insects and other mosquitoes. But for me, the most troubling thing is that we, the homeowners in Planters Ridge, invested in our homes, trusting that the city of Gastonia would protect our investment by preserving the integrity of the existing zoning restrictions. Now, you, the city council, are being asked to change those rules that protected us in order for a few individuals to profit. I'm convinced that the owners of this property will eventually be able to profit by developing this land as it is intended to be developed.
Mr. Ferguson, I'm sorry, red light's on. I'm trying to be very consistent with every speaker, so if you could close it out.
Yes, ma'am. We think if you vote no on this issue, that would be a win-win for everyone, and it would protect the integrity of how this property is owned. Thank you for your service, and I trust that you will continue to protect the property owners of this great city by voting no.
Dr. John Warlick?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thanks to the city council for all of the efforts and work you're going through regarding this matter. My name is Dr. John Warlick. I was a urological surgeon in Gastonia for 40 years, having retired in December of 2012. My wife Barbara and I were born and raised in Clover, South Carolina, and Bethany. We were country, country farm people. We have moved from New Orleans, where I trained and did all my work, just like Dr. Garrett did, and we have been residents in the Heatherlock area since 1976. That's 37 years. When we came in '72, that's when Heatherlock was being developed. We saw all of the development take place, and it has been a very, very successful home situation and residential situation all these years. My topic for presentation tonight concerns the historical development of the Heatherlock community. In 1972, Mr. Thomas Ball purchased 300 acres of farmland and wooded land from Mr. Sloan Robinson. This farmland extended between Union Road and also out to Robin Wood Road. It was a big, big tract of land. We were the first home to be built in Phase III, which is in the back part. Anyway, over two years, 1974 and '75, about six houses have been built. Today, we have a total of 112 homeowners and three lots that are still owned but have not been developed or built on at this time. The development was all taking place starting in '73, and they built a seven-acre lake and all of the roads and surveyed all the properties for the homeowners. Heatherlock has, as I say, been in existence for 40 years, and today we have 112 homeowners. Today, we have a very desirable community with wonderful neighbors. Our community is protected and safe for any and all activities. The vast majority of homeowners have lived in Heatherlock for 20 to 25 years or longer. Most homeowners plan to make this their final home in retirement and all. With all of above information, you can clearly see and understand our sincere desires to protect and preserve our subdivision and community. In closing, I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you. We most sincerely request that the members of our city council will hear our concerns and allow us to continue our preservation of the Heatherlock community as it is today. We greatly would appreciate a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warlick. Nancy Garrett?
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, Councilman, Nancy Garrett, 2985 Robin Wood Road. Personally, I would be embarrassed to go begging for a grocery store to come to this area, particularly since it was one that was here, you know, a year ago, and it chose to leave the area. This is a residential neighborhood and maybe one of the few residential neighborhoods left. This issue is dividing the entire neighborhood. This issue is pitting neighbors against neighbors, friends against friends. So I would ask you to keep the progress that's been promoted here and the commercialism, keep all the commercial property remaining on Garrison and Franklin Avenue, and also on New Hope Road and Union Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Yarborough?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Yarborough, and I live at 3518 St. Mary's Court. I'm property owner number 24 on your map. Although I've worked in Charlotte for the last 35 years, I live in Gaston County. It's where I was born. This is my home. I try to give back to the community, and I want to see it grow and prosper. I work for a major corporation where many of its employees in Charlotte live in surrounding towns and counties. But I can assure you, there are only a handful of them that live in Gaston County. Could it be that places like Huntersville, Concord, Fort Mill have amenities that we don't have in Gaston County? I believe so. We have wonderful attractions here, like the Sheil Museum and the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden. But what we need is for people to want to live here, work here, shop here, not just come and be periodic visitors. I must admit, I do a lot of my shopping in Charlotte, even eating out, because we don't have the business options here in Gastonia they do in Charlotte. Even Belmont seems to be a little more progressive than we are here in Gastonia. I never thought, when we lost the Harris teeter, I'd be doing my grocery shopping in Charlotte, but I take a cooler in my car and I spend my money over there. I believe we need to look at this development as an economic development opportunity. As part of my job, I review applications for economic development incentives in North and South Carolina, and I frankly cannot remember the last time I saw one from Gaston County come across my desk. We cannot attract young professionals. We cannot get our homegrown young people to come back. We're not going to attract new upscale businesses if we don't have the amenities that make living in Gastonia cool. I have seen what business expansion has done for the small town of Apex, which is where my daughter lives, near Raleigh. They have a Harris teeter about 200 yards from her house and great development around that area. Lots of shopping and restaurants, Greenway, and I see a lot of new home construction in that area. I don't see that home construction around here. And with all due respect to my backdoor neighbor, Mr. Hevner, who suggests patio homes for this area, I think that'd be great. But if you look across the street from us at Randolph Park, that area is probably only a little more than half-built out. So I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. Many of the opponents have cited the traffic problems, but I look at it this way. I think traffic is good. I think it says we're growing and prospering. I don't want to live in a ghost town. And frankly, I'd rather spend another extra two or three minutes, if that's what it takes, than have to drive to Charlotte to get the things that I need. I'd like to thank the developer for listening to every concern of the adjoining property owners, meeting in our homes, and making numerous concessions to make this win-win. I'd also like to thank the majority of the planning commission, who I believe saw this as good for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speakers will be Mike Holder, Gene Hemple. Okay, okay. What about Brody? Brody Finckley? Okay. Anna Rimpro, Bobby Hefner, Marty Mormon. Say? Yes. We have a question from a council member for the attorney.
I had some questions for Mr. Holder as the NCDOT representative. Would it be appropriate to ask them after he finishes, or should we continue with?
Anybody you want to ask questions while they're at the podium, it's appropriate to ask while they're at the podium. Thank you.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, and council members. I'm Mike Holder. I'm the NCDOT Division 12 Engineer for Transportation Division 12. In that capacity, I'm the State's Chief Executive Officer for all transportation matters in the six-county area, inclusive of Gaston County. My office address is 1710 East Marion Street in Shelby, North Carolina. Obviously, I'm not here tonight to advocate a position for or against this project, but merely to speak to process that the developers followed in the negotiation of traffic mitigation. As a matter of full disclosure, I read the traffic document yesterday, and I've had staff members that have worked cooperatively with Kemble Horn's staff in development of the traffic impacts and the required mitigation that's been proposed. The improvements proposed adequately mitigate the site traffic generated and fulfill all requirements of the development that my staff has required of the developer. The traffic volume shown in the document, the traffic counts and analysis and the roadway geometry relative to turn lanes proposed are all requisite, meet all requisite DOT policies and requirements. I'll take questions.
Questions from council. Councilman Pierceall?
Mr. Holder, thank you. We obviously heard the numbers from the traffic study, which include information, I guess, from your office at NCDOT.
Yes, sir.
And then in a separate report, we heard quite different numbers, challenging your numbers.
Right.
Would you say those numbers are wrong?
No, would not say those numbers are wrong. You're talking about the average daily traffic numbers?
So whose numbers are wrong? His numbers were different from their numbers, so somebody has to be wrong.
It specifically would be which numbers are wrong.
We heard traffic counts. We heard the number of in and out.
Well, the traffic numbers, the ADT that he showed on the map itself is from DOT's latest traffic counts of the roadways in that area. The trip generation that was demonstrated, I believe it was 14,700 and some, from the proposed shopping center, was correct, and that is what is in Kemble Horn's document.
Any other questions? Ms. Councilman Kimball?
Mr. Holder, where are your-
My apologies, sir.
I'm sorry.
Were there differences in the way the calculations were made as far as, you know, the times of day, day of the week, or the processes that you went to do those, that both you and the applicant went to do those counts? Could that be a, something that would explain the disparities?
It could be. As a matter of process, we actually review the traffic impact analysis that Kemble Horn creates, and they're the author of the document. So we review all the traffic counts and the turning movement counts and the mitigation that's recommended as a result of their document for compliance with our policy on driveway connections. And those numbers look reasonable to us. The distribution was correct relative to traffic in the area. It met all requirements that we thought it needed to, and therefore, the improvements recommended fulfilled the, it did not change the level of service of the adjacent roadways being Kendrick and Robinwood and the intersections from an existing level of service. I think Steve detailed what those were in his presentation. The level of service stays the same even with the traffic impact from the site itself. So that, and they accomplished that by mitigation measures that they're proposing to do.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Galler?
Sir, Mike, wanted to find out, putting a turning lane, a left-hand turning lane going into Heatherlock, is that a good thing in your professional opinion?
It is a good thing, Mr. Galler, yes, because it'll improve that four-lane section. The five-lane section is going to be safer because it's going to remove the turning traffic from the, through traffic that is on Robinwood itself.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anna Remfro?
Good evening, members of the council and city staff. My name is Anna Remfro, and I reside at 1625 Heatherlock Drive. First, I'd like to thank those of you who took time to return my phone calls and have conversations about this. That meant a lot and shows me your dedication to our community. As a native of this area, I have witnessed firsthand, as many of you have, the insipid creeping of vacant large buildings across our city, many of which are a result of poor zoning decisions. It is my desire that this council will deny the proposal to mar yet another beautiful residential area of Gastonia. It is time to stop the build and abandon cycle that permeates our city. Traffic along Robinwood Road is already heavy, and yet you have a proposal in front of you that will substantially increase the traffic on this road, making the potential of additional accidents certain. What do you think will happen when a child is attempting to cross five lanes of traffic and someone is trying to beep the light? Remember Franklin Boulevard is five lanes. Are you willing to take this risk with your children and grandchildren? I'm not. Zoning impacts quality of life. I do not look forward to looking out of my kitchen window and seeing the lights from dusk until dawn, hearing the trash dumpster pick up at each and every establishment, and dealing with the heavy traffic that will accompany the development. I've read reports that noise from dumpsters can reach 94 decibels. Consider the daily noise from dumpsters situated behind each and every establishment outlined on this site plan. You're not talking about one dumpster. According to the developer's site plan, there are at least 12. We know how loud the garbage and recycling trucks are one day a week. Imagine being awakened every night to this noise. Can you point to a single shopping center in our city that has enhanced the residential neighborhoods surrounding it? Just one. I've looked. I can't find one. How are you, as a council, working to recruit families to our beautiful city from the new industries coming into the region? Charlotte gets the businesses here, but I could venture a guess that our neighbors are working hard to draw the families in. Gastonia provides a great commute, lovely neighborhoods, churches, and beautiful amenities. Where do you think these families who would live in Gastonia, next to a shopping center? Has the developer of the proposed, the proposal considered being really innovative by locating this in the Loraim Hill facility or another historic area already zoned for commercial use? Imagine the influx of growth that would accompany such a proposal and the statement it would make to the community at large that Gastonia, in partnership with the developer, is looking to the future by respecting not just the past, but the integrity of its families and neighborhoods that form the foundation of a great city. We have invested already in our community. This proposal is not in our best interest, and I respectfully request that you be visionary and really focus on what is best for our city by voting against the rezoning request now and in the future. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Bobby Hefner?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Bobby Hefner. I live at 3020 Robinwood Road. I'm a newcomer to this neighborhood. I've only lived there slightly over a year. Decided I wanted to retire. Done due diligence, looked for a place to retire, read the 2025 plan, says, oh, this is where I want to be. I took my retirement dollars and I bought a nice residential home, and so this is where I'm going to retire. Three months, four months ago, I found out that this is now Harris Teeter's question and the council's question, not mine. It had nothing to do with 3020, 2025. So, you know, I'll go on to the traffic problem. I live right in the middle between Heatherlock entrance and the Planters Ridge. I get the tra, I can't see traffic neither way. There's not one day goes by that I don't get my finger stuck up at me or blowed at or run off the road or something ever, just about every day. Very seldom that I go two days without it. So the traffic is a problem, and the gentleman said that they was going to only allow deliveries from nine in the morning till six at night. What are you going to do with enough trucks in the, in the midst of all that traffic trying to get in and out of the shopping center when there ain't no room there now? So you got tractor-trailers to service all of the, all of the stores that area. It's about all I had to say, except I would ask that the commission think of one other thing that's, is talking about being consistent. I'm property owner 12 on your chart. If you look at it, I'm the only one that got, still got a 25-foot buffer. Maybe it's because I'm a newcomer in the neighborhood. I don't know. I don't feel like it. I feel like I've been looked at from men upstairs for some reason or another. But I would like to urge the councils that to go back to the plan that you had, and let's get this show shut down and so we can all go back to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Moran? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Marty Moran?
Uh-huh, okay.
I'd be short and quick here. I just want to say, please let this area remain a residential area. We moved here in 1982, and we've seen many changes, most of them for the good, and we picked an area that would not have a gas station across the street or a lot of traffic. So I just asked, please listen to we, the people.
Mr. Moran, would you state your name again and your address for the clerk, please?
I didn't what you say?
While you're doing that, I'm going to call the next five people. Marty Starnes, Fred Jackson, Bob Clay, Cam Tracy, and Charles Ledford.
It's Marty Moran.
Oh, I'm sorry. Moran, okay. Did you get his address?
Address, sir.
Okay. Your address.
Say your address, sir.
Where do you live?
Heatherlock.
Okay, what address?
2507 Arbuthnot Trace.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, and the council for being able to speak tonight concerning the rezoning. Since the unveiling of the proposed project behind me, every article that has appeared since January in the Charlotte Observer or the Gaston Gazette has focused on the fact that there'll be a probable 300 to 400 jobs, including the editorial in today's Gaston Gazette. I do not believe that there can be a net gain of 300 to 400 jobs due to the probable loss of employment which will be incurred due to the imminent store closings that will happen due to the saturation of the grocery industry just within a two-mile radius of the proposed project. I think the employment picture will more likely be neutral job growth to possible slight job growth. The anchor store of the proposed project is a 53,000-square-foot grocery store, and according to the latest data that's been published on the grocery industry, a store between 38 and 55,000 square feet will employ 95 people running three shifts a day. The U.S. Department of Labor also gives these significant facts concerning the workforce in a grocery store. Three points, mainly that the job force in the grocery store will be part-time and relatively low-paying job, that many employees are young, between the ages of 16 and 24, and hold down 32% of those jobs, and that cashiers and stock clerks and order fillers hold 49% of those jobs. So it was very encouraging to hear Mr. Whipple say tonight that with the proposed new grocery store, that 55% of the employees will be full-time. So with this new coming grocery store, this potential growth, there'll certainly be people who will be unemployed due to the collapse of the new grocery store, and hopefully and prayerfully, those individuals that will lose their jobs, even though there may be a relatively young workforce and certainly a part-time workforce, will be able to be re-employed due to their experience. Calls for two fast food restaurants, there's no rent structure available, you don't know, there's a plethora of commercial space available on the web. You look at what's available in Gastonia, is somebody going to want to come because it's cheaper? Rent rates from $3, $6 to $34 to negotiable per square foot. We just don't know what the future holds. So I just ask you to, as a council, if you vote no to this project, to not be looked upon as a person who turns your back on the potential of 300 to 400 jobs when quite the opposite is the truth. It basically will be neutral job growth to slight job growth. Do the right thing. Keep it residential. Thank you.
Fred Jackson? If you'll state your name and address, please.
Sure. Fred Jackson, 3671 Sherwood Circle, and we're in the neighborhood just slightly down the road from this development. In full disclosure, I've spent 33 years with Reddick Corporation. It owned Harris Teeter prior to selling A&amp;E to the KPS Capital Partners. It's been a great company to have worked for, is a great company to still be associated with, and I'm very proud of Harris Teeter and what they've accomplished. I'm really here to talk to you tonight about, we have two great neighbors in our neighborhood that have been mentors to Janet and I since we've lived here. They couldn't be with you tonight, but they just wanted you to know the Bryant's and the Kimbrel's are two of the most progressive people I've ever met in my life. I have never met two people who believe in progress in the community and creating jobs in the community and going forward. I cannot say anything tonight that will help those who do not want this project to go forward. There's nothing I can say that will make you feel better about the development, there's nothing I can say to make you feel better about traffic, but grocery stores like Harris Teeter attract people within a short radius. Typically, a store is developed to attract, like he said, within a mile, but typically no more than five miles. So the traffic that you're going to be seeing put back in your neighborhood, a lot of them is you. You driving, you're the count that's going to be going to and from the shopping center and to and from the place to do business, and people come to shopping centers today and look to developments like this for quality of life. And if you look, don't look at Charlotte, look at Greenville, look at Burtdale, look at Spartanburg. If you look at all these cities that are attracting upscale, higher-scale centers, they're doing it because young people want to be attracted to a place to walk, shop, eat, and dine in a short proximity to where they live. So I would appreciate you to do the right thing that you see as possible. You've heard a lot of reasons not to do this tonight. I'm just trying to float some ideas to you why you would want to do this tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Bob Clay?
Good evening. My name is Bob Clay. I reside at 3617 Golf View Drive. It's a neighborhood just off Kendrick Drive near this development. I'm here to ask you to think about Gastonia. I'm asking you to think about Gaston County. This is a classic case of neighbors not wanting this near their homes, and I understand them. I do. I've been through numerous zoning cases myself and certainly understand where they are, but I will tell you that I think there's a lot of real attributes to this particular development. They are a significant tax base increase with no dollar expense to the city or taxpayers. Many studies have been completed by the previous county manager, and I think all of us have been in the room, when he consistently said that unless a residential home is valued, assessed at $280,000, that it is not paying for its own services the municipalities have to provide. I would tell you that what I heard tonight was that there's a 23-unit town home development or patio home development that has a minimum requirement of 1,300 square feet. At $100 a square foot, that's $130,000 per unit. I would also tell you that in Gaston County, I've witnessed this, I'm a commercial real estate broker and developer myself. I have no financial interest or gain or anything to do with this development other than I would like to be able to shop there personally. But I will tell you that value, land values have dropped, land values have dropped in Gaston County 40 to 50%. Anybody that's a landowner knows it and feels it. I'm one of them, not anywhere around this, but in other areas. So I know the pain of doing this personally. I would tell you that roadway improvements that these folks intend to make of over a million dollars, who is going to do that? Who's going to build that other lane? City of Gastonia isn't going to do it. The only way that this is being funded is because of the quality of two things. The Harris Teeter, the rents that are going to be provided by the other high-end tenants that are going to come to this, come to this site. That's how, that's how it makes sense. There are jobs, part-time, permanent. I can't argue with, I mean, you can go on the internet and find anything you want. I've got to believe that the gentleman that runs Harris Teeter and is with Harris Teeter knows, knows what kind of jobs he's going to have in the store. I would tell you that with no incentives having to be given, I mean, as much as we all love the Gaston Tech Park, it's 115 jobs that it's brought us so far, great salaries, but at what expense have we all done that? Are our taxpayers given land? We've had to give major incentives. I believe it's all going to come back to us in the future, but this is something that has no investment for y'all at all and a great tax base. The conditional use plan that documents and guarantees these uses, design criteria, increased buffers surrounding all traffic improvements. Do you honestly believe that any residential developer, including myself, is going to have those buffers? With that said, I think you have a great opportunity. I hope that you will support this wholeheartedly as I do. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Cam Tracy?
Good evening, city council members, mayor, pro tem. My name is Cam Tracy, and I reside at 1118 Heatherlock Drive. My husband and three sons have resided there for the last 22 years. I've seen a lot of growth in Gaston County. Love it. I love Harris Teeter, love to shop there. However, I feel like this is the wrong location for Harris Teeter. There are so many other places in Gaston County or particularly Gastonia where Harris Teeter could go. We are recently, this summer, hosting two grizzly ballplayers. One of the players is from Saskatchewan, Canada. His parents were visiting this week. We took them downtown to Tequila's, showed them downtown Gastonia, and they loved it downtown, however, they were amazed that we had all these empty buildings. They didn't understand it. Why do you have all these empty buildings downtown? What happened? Then we told them about the proposed development for the Harris Teeter across from our neighborhood. They didn't understand that either. That makes absolutely no sense when you have all these empty buildings downtown. Why would you want to do that? Three points I would like to make. Number one, I feel like this change in zoning would be a detriment to the greater good of our community, meaning Heatherlock and all the residential areas surrounding us. Number two, this 2025 plan, it was good. There was wisdom in it. Why would you all of a sudden, you know, want to change it? Because there are other places to go. And three, it certainly would have an effect on the quality of life. We have to be concerned with not just air quality, but noise issues and light pollution.
My wife, Lynn, and I live at 1221 Lamp Post Court, number 19, on your list of residents that are directly adjacent to this particular plan. While these other people are talking about these issues with traffic and things like that, I was sort of referred to by previous profession. I recently retired as the Assistant Chief of Police here at the Gastonia Police Department, and we spent a lot of time, and I know all of you are aware of, talking about communities and the importance of community, and the cornerstone of that in Gastonia is the neighborhoods. And I like to say that, in my personal opinion, this particular development is a detriment to the neighborhoods that are existing, and things that get in the way of neighborhoods, that get in the way of people being part of a community, that are going to be a bear that be formed, that's a negative. A lot of proposals have happened in the city, a lot of different department entities are opposed to do neighborhood enhancement. You have a treasure here already, that already exists, this neighborhood, this community, of having a quality neighborhood establishment, and I would like to ask that you might do something to tear that down. And I believe this commercial establishment with the detriments it's going to bring in, the negative qualities of traffic, the lights, the sound, the strangers coming through, that the issues that are going to come about are going to be a detriment, that will be a negative effect. So I'd like to ask for you all to vote no against this zoning change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next group of speakers would be Don Harrison, Terry King, Ryan Dopri, okay, Loretta Stoker, Stoker, Ernie Nivens, and Ronnie Starnes.
Good evening, Madam Pro Tem, council members. My name is Don Harrison. I live at 3542 St. Mary's Court. We're one of the neighbors to this project here. I've been on HOA board there, number of organizations here in town, and I see this project from many perspectives. I'm here to ask you for your yes vote on this project. I've been in banking business for the last 40 years. Nine of those years, most recent years, here in Gastonia in the banking business. And in those 40 years, I have probably seen all examples of the good, the bad, and the ugly as far as real estate development projects go. I would say this one ranks at the top of the list as best-in-class, not only for quality of development, for quality of developer. I've watched the city efforts here for years try to jump-start development with lots of dollars invested in the Firestone Mill, downtown development, and I guess success of those projects has yet to be determined. But those investments were made trying to spur further private investment in this community. Now we sit here, and here comes a multimillion-dollar development with private investment, asking for permission to invest in our community. The thing about private money is it has lots of places it can go, but it usually likes to go places where it is welcomed and accommodated. In my opinion, you turn down this investment in this project, and you can essentially put out the "closed-for-business" sign on the front door of Gastonia. Other developers are going to look at what happens here and say, "Why bother?" There's also the rule of unintended consequences playing out in this, because you might expect that a no vote will leave things at status quo. Everybody will go home, the project won't get done, things stay as they are. Quite the contrary. A no vote, no vote, means that we will move backward. What does that mean? In the banking business here, a lot of things are going on. I worked for Community One, starting at the first of the year, there were four people in the commercial banking department. Right now, there is one. The other three redeployed to Charlotte where the prospects of new business development is a lot better than here in Gastonia. I would say that's playing out in other financial institutions up and down U-Hope Road. You all sit here as elected officials. Decisions like the one before you tonight give you the opportunity to be recognized as leaders. Leadership requires vision, toughness, and a sense of what is the right thing for the community as a whole. My hope is that all of you will be remembered as leaders who voted yes on this project to move Gastonia forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Terry King.
Madam Pro Tem, I'll be doing the rebuttal for the opponents, so I'll be last, thank you.
Okay. Loretta Stoker.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Loretta Stoker, and I live at 1637 Heatherlock Drive, and I've lived there since 1978. My husband and I moved here with our two children. We raised them here, and we now have two grandchildren, and so we are very concerned about the possible changes to the area we live in. Let me say, without any doubt, I am a Harris Teeter fan. I was a faithful, loyal customer to Harris Teeter until they locked their doors and left. And had they stayed in their old store, I'd still be driving my van down there every week, sometimes more than one time, to buy groceries, because it's a great store. But the elephant in the room is not a store, it's a shopping center. And besides that, Harris Teeter has been sold. We don't know what Harris Teeter is going to look like by the time this shopping center gets up and running. I mean, we have people who can say, "Oh, it's going to be this or that." But when Harris Teeter was sold, the first statements out to the press were statements I have heard every time a large company buys another company. Folks, there are not going to be any changes, but there are going to be changes. They say that to keep the workforce in hand and to keep their customers loyal. We don't know what the story is going to look like that's going to go in the Robinwood Road area. But we do know that if you put that shopping center there, that will define the area of Robinwood Road. It will no longer be considered a really nice residential area. It will be defined by the shopping center. That will be our dominant marker. And that shopping center is going to be a public place. If you close your eyes and think of every shopping center you've ever seen, they're public, by their very nature, which means that they're open all time to anybody who wants to be there, whether the stores are open or not. Now, we haven't had to deal with those issues before, but if this goes through, we will have to deal with those issues. It's more than traffic. It's a change in the way we live. We've lived in our home for 35 years, and we love where we live. We love Harris Teeter, but there are other places in this town where Harris Teeter can be successful. We can't move our house, and neither can any of the other people in this room tonight. We just can't do it. When we came here in 1978, talked to our realtor, she asked us questions. How many bedrooms are you going to need? Bathrooms? Do you need a dining room? You want one-story, two-story? You want brick? Do you want frame? You've got to have a barrage? What about school districts? Is that important to you? She never said, "Loretta, how would you like to live next door to a shopping center?" And that was not on my list when I bought my house. Was it on your list when you bought your home?
Mrs. Stoker, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Please vote no.
Ernie Nivens.
Let's get southern, shall we? I'm Ernie Nivens, 3320 Randolph Park Circle. I've lived in Gastonia for 20 years, since 1993, when I chose, I was living in Gaston. I chose to move to Gastonia. I want to talk to you this evening about matters of the heart. And I want to clarify, first of all, the developers have never come to Randolph Park to talk to us about this. They've ignored us. We wanted them to come, but they have not come. We've heard about them going to other places, but not to talk to us. A while ago, Ms. Pascal pretty much said to you that the 2025 plan is pretty much sounding fury, signifying nothing. It's just a plan, she said. That was done in 2011. Did you waste your time in 2011? I don't think so. It's a valuable plan. I encourage you to follow it. Of all those who are reticent about the ramifications of this larger subdivision, we're not opposed to growth and development, not at all. We seek neighborhood growth that will bring families and friends, not commercial growth, not in our back doors, or our front doors, or not any commercial big boxes. We wanted to come to Gastonia, sure. That's great, that's smart. But put it someplace that's already zoned for commercial big boxes and commercial grocery stores. Don't put it in our back door. What kind of planning is that? Doesn't make sense to me. I used to work for Harris Teeter years ago. I know them inside out. And I knew the big fat boy, Mr. Harris, used to come around. And when he drove in the parking lot, we all got a warning that he was on sight, and we had to straighten up and stand tall. It was a scary place to work. That's many years ago, okay? In my other life. Harris Teeter chose to abandon Gastonia. And so now, here she comes back as Cinderella, wanting to waltz back in our lives and bring with her her ugly sisters. An ugly sister of urban sprawl, an ugly sister of noisy, stinky trash collection systems in our back doors, an ugly sister of higher level of crime. Hey, folks, I just pulled this off the Internet this afternoon. This is from the Triad up in Greensboro, High Point. Harris Teeter has added uniformed security to all its Triad stores after several armed robberies and attempted robberies in recent days. Company officials didn't give further details about its beefed-up security, saying it didn't want the suspects to know their plans.
Mr. Nivens, I'm sorry, but the red light's on.
Already?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I'm trying to be as consistent as we can be.
I got other ugly sisters.
Well, if you can just close it in, we would appreciate it.
All right. I'll reveal the other couple of ugly sisters, and I'll give you a closing statement.
Thank you.
The other ugly sister is more traffic, which creates more accidents, and we've been told by their traffic study, they're going to direct 35% of the traffic down Kendrick, down my road. And it's going to mess up. Involved in that are seven subdivisions. Let me list them for you, just so you'll know. Randolph Park, Biltmore Estates, St. Mary's on Kendrick, Clubview Estates, Country Club Estates, Susan Farm and Fairways. That's subdivision. Plus, there are 15 other intersections that'll be involved in this. And they're telling us they're going to direct 35% of their traffic down Kendrick. Hey, neighbors, that's 5,000 cars a day. When I try to come out Randolph Park it now, I feel like I'm playing master tennis, watching back and forth to see if I can jump. I'd like the police to come do a study about speed traffic out there, anyway. All right, I'll close with this.
Thank you.
Council members, I don't envy you. You hold in your hands the power of decision. I implore you to protect the families, young people, and children of the Robinwood area. Send this store somewhere else in town where it's commercial. Vote no to this tract of land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ronnie Starnes.
I promise you, I will not go over my time limit. Ronnie Starnes, 2924 Grandian Drive, Gastonia. Dear City Council, I am opposed to this development. Proponents of the development like to tout the positive economic benefits of new jobs and additional taxes it will have on the city, along with bringing upscale shopping and dining. One publication today even argued that to deny this rezoning could taint Gastonia as a city not open and inviting to new businesses. My only comments on these arguments are that I do not believe net new jobs will be created after the competitive dust settles, considering the market saturation of the area, and I do not believe that upscale shopping and dining will be drawn to this development. Any thought that Gastonia is not open and inviting to new businesses is both narrow-minded and lacking in knowledge of our city. By the way, can someone tell me the name of an upscale restaurant at the Colony Road and Railroad Development in Charlotte? It's been there for 10 or 12 years. I am simply opposed to the location of the development. The development would be a traffic nightmare, it will disrupt quality of life in long-established neighborhoods, and it is not in agreement with the city's 2025 comprehensive plan. It is in close proximity to a public school for children in grades four and five, as well as a church. These are issues that should be weighed by you more importantly than any perceived economic benefits. This development is not smart growth. It is opposed by many of the affected residents, and it is unnecessary, because there are far better suitable sites only a short distance down the road. If it is such a benefit to the city, why did the city staff not endorse it? It is not as if you would be setting a precedent in North Carolina by denying this rezoning request. The University of North Carolina Chapel Hill School of Government queried North Carolina local governments for the calendar year 2006 about zoning amendments in the state of North Carolina. The report released in 2008, based on this survey, stated that, by far, the most common reason cited for denial of rezoning petitions was inconsistency of the project with the surrounding neighborhood. In cities of populations greater than 25,000, the second most common reason cited for denial was traffic impacts. The third most common reason cited for denial was inconsistency with the jurisdiction's adopted plan. All three are in play here. Please do the right thing for our community and deny this rezoning petition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speakers will be Mike Foster, Chris Fletcher, Sarah White Carver, Scott Whipple. Okay, okay. Kelly Kelly, and Moses Miranda.
My name's Mike Foster. We live at 3352 Randolph Park Circle. Good evening, city councils, and we appreciate your service to the city. We've been a resident out at Randolph Park Circle for four years, and one reason we bought out there was the fact that everything out there was, in the area, was zoned residential. It's appealing to us, and we plan to live there many more years. But we're opposed to this proposed development for many reasons already been stated here. It just won't do a whole lot of good for the surrounding neighborhoods, Randolph Park, St. Mary's, Heatherlock, and Planters Ridge. Back a few days ago, I sent each one of you an email, I trust you read it, in which I stated about seven reasons why this plan should not be approved. And I want to go back to the 2025 comprehensive plan. This was approved and published the... back to the 2025 comprehensive plan. This was approved and published back in 2011. The city published and approved the 2025 comprehensive plan. This property that the developer wants to have rezoned was zoned residential. At that point in time, it still is. The city needs to stand by the long-range plans, particularly when we look at the established neighborhoods and residential areas around this proposed rezoning. I've reviewed the 2025 comprehensive plan. I'm going to quote what it says. These are all quotes. Neighborhoods are the building blocks of overall community development for the city in their vision plans, and they need to preserve and create sustainable neighborhoods and enhance the quality of the life and livability of Gastonia. Make no mistake, neighborhoods, in fact, become the backbone of a city. Creating a city of healthy, sustainable neighborhoods takes a conscientious and proactive decision by community leaders, government, and private sector partners. Of all the segments that determine a neighborhood's stability, homes are by far the most influential. Good housing only exists in the context of good neighborhoods. And the quote, these are all in the 2025 comprehensive plan. These and other quotes from the plan emphasize the importance of neighborhoods and the overall development of Gastonia. Why would you put a shopping center in the midst of four established neighborhoods, Planters Ridge, Heatherlock, Randolph Park, and St. Mary's? So we ask that you vote no on this proposal. One other thing, I've been in business for over 40 years, in the business world. Harris Teeter is being bought by Krogers, and they always say that there's never any changes after a sale, after merger, acquisition. Well, I think we all know there are changes to come about. And what Kroger's intent are, as far as capital expenditures for Harris Teeter, we don't know. They may even change the scope of this project. So that's just another reason why we shouldn't be at the whim and mercy of Harris Teeter. So thank you for voting no.
Thank you, sir. Chris Fletcher.
Chris Fletcher, 3502 St. Mary's Court. I'd like for the council to consider one thing. This property is going to get developed sooner or later by somebody. We know what we've got right now. We're going to have beautiful buildings. We're going to have big buffers that we'll probably never get again. We'll have trees throughout the property. We're going to have fountains. We're going to have benches. It's going to be a nice place to go. It's going to be a draw for businesses. It's going to be a draw for excitement in our town, which we really don't have right now. If we don't take this plan, what are we going to end up with? You can just look down Hoffman Road and see what's going on. You see the commercial coming right down the street. Is it going to stop at Kendrick Road? I don't think so. Sooner or later, there's going to be development on this property, and there's a good chance, right along Hoffman Road, it's going to be commercial. Even if it doesn't, what's going to be there? Is it going to be patio homes like St. Mary's? I don't think anybody in this room believes that. It's going to be closer to these 1,300 square foot homes that was mentioned earlier. That's what's going to be there. It's not going to fit in with the neighborhoods that are around there. This development fits in with the neighborhoods that are around there. And from a traffic standpoint, I don't think any of us really relate to the numbers. But my wife and I, we go to Charlotte almost every week to eat at a pretty nice restaurant. Do you know where most of those restaurants are located? They're located in a little development, just like this. Do you know where those developments are? Almost every one of them are in residential subdivisions. They are surrounded by residential subdivisions. Are they this size? No, they are five to 10 times bigger than this one. Are the residential neighborhoods around there smaller than ours? No, they're much bigger than ours. Do we have any problem getting in and out of any of those restaurants, any of those developments? Absolutely not. We drive in and out of there with no problem at all. We drive in and out of the subdivisions because we like to look at the houses. I see this as a positive thing for Gastonia. I see it as something if we back up and we turn this down, that we're turning our back on progress in Gastonia. And developers like these are not going to come back to Gastonia. Appreciate it, your vote in favor of this project.
Thank you, sir. Sarah White Carver.
Council members, I'm Sarah White Carver. I live at 2912 Gateshead Court. We have been residents there for 24 years, moved here after having lived in Charlotte, and Miami, and Norfolk, and New Orleans. And we lived in Charlotte when the Harris Teeter began. They're out there near Sharon Amity. I don't know whether that was the first one there, but it was the first one we shopped in. Loved it, still do, still go shop there sometimes. But I am opposed to a shopping center in our neighborhood because there are other places within a mile that would be much better locations, and it would not disrupt the neighborhood. And I also think about, why are we thinking so much about focusing on that particular site? Is it because they think the people there are richer, and therefore they're going to make more profit? Is that profit for us or for them? What about the statement that was made that the Harris Teeter was going to be open for all people in Gaston County that was made in one of the small meetings? I work across town with a lot of people. There are people over there that would like nice, clean stores, too. And I just feel like it's not the best place to put a store. I respect the people that are doing it. I'm friends with some of the people that are doing it, and we all have our different beliefs. But I hope that you will listen to the arguments that have been given on our side and vote no. Appreciate your studies on this, your interest for the councilmen that have called or we've called, and they've been nice to answer questions. Thanks. Not every place do they do that. But the other thing I want to say, in watching new developments in the different cities, and we lived on Hunter Lane in Charlotte, and the Providence Road area bordering all of the development that has gone there has gone down. Randolph Road going into the city, the beautiful old homes there were taken over. And progress has to be made, and I'm not against progress. But we're a little town. We're not Charlotte. And I think we're going to end up like beach towns, and a little bit here and a little bit there. And I do hope you will look through your plans and seriously consider changing your mind if you've already made it up, or at least be open to what's been said. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kelly Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Kelly. I live at 1012 Heatherlock Drive. Thank you, Madam Pro Tem and council members, for your time and your service, and thank you for listening to all of us. I corresponded with all of you regarding the reasons why my husband and I are opposed to the rezoning, but I want to reemphasize a few of them. I grew up in Gastonia. I grew up in the same neighborhood in which we live now. My husband and I chose to raise our family here because it is a peaceful residential area. It would be great to see new upscale businesses open and thrive in Gastonia. We sincerely hope that they do. That would be progress if they do not hinder the safety and quality of life for surrounding residents. This is not about Harris Teeter, or Kroger for that matter. This is about adhering to the 2025 comprehensive plan for our city adopted just two years ago, which preserves the integrity of this residential area. This is about protecting the safety of drivers along Robinwood, Hoffman, and Kendrick Roads, and in surrounding neighborhoods, and most importantly, the children at Hawks Nest Intermediate, my children included. How can you vote to approve this rezoning request for a construction project that leaves us wondering what kind of establishment this would be? July 9th Gazette article said that the developer, quote, "would agree to the city requiring a Harris Teeter to open on the property as a condition of the rezoning," end quote. How can the developer agree to that? And how can the city require that when neither can be sure what Harris Teeter or Kroger's long-term business plans are in the first place? In addition, Kroger, as the new owner, may decide they don't want to build there, leaving the property zoned commercial for any type of C3 business to open. That is a risk I hope you are not willing to take. Thank you.
Thank you. Moses Miranda. I didn't say that wrong.
Miranda.
I like the way you said it.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Moses Miranda. I am 11217 Marcela Drive. I am a realtor, business owner. I have been here in Gastonia for 14 years. And a Cuban immigrant, I am raising a family in Gastonia. I want to say thank you, each one of you, for having me tonight and listening to this Cuban broken accent. And also, I want to say to everybody in this room, especially the people that feel hurt because it's changing in the community, I want to say a wide of God to bless you guys with 20 or 30 years more of life. And you will see this melting pot that is coming to our community. We are not going to recognize the community 10, 12 years from now. Now, back to the Harris Teeters. A person who do not have any interest on this development, I do not represent anybody, but I see the beauty of what is going to happen in the community. Also, I feel that it's my obligation to speak on behalf of the beauty of development and the developer that have the courage to come here and fight this, too. When a new proposal comes here to the city, I feel happy, very happy, because it's prosperity for the city. Also, I know it's going to increase traffic, propose, say the value of a home is going down, I will say, oh, some store is going to close, I will say, let capitalism work, that work. And in this free society that we live, that I love, and I would give my life for this. Also, I have a question. If this developer do not go through, what kind of message are we going to send for the new future developer? I have been a developer. So I want to say this. Improving the quality of life is going to happen with that Harris Teeter here. I hope I make a difference from my Cuban prospect, living citizen of this country. And I hope that you guys tonight made the right decision, not personal decision, the right decision for the best of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group of speakers will be Joanne Delevega, Roger Stowe, Anna Catherine Renfro. Is that a double one? Oh, Anna Catherine, okay. And John Stanley. Okay, go right ahead, Joanne.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and City Councilman. I do want to thank you for your time and for your efforts on behalf of this proposal. My name is Joanne Delevega, and I live with my husband, Dr. Raul Delevega, at 2936 Grampian Drive in Heatherlock. We have lived there for 23 years, have raised our three children there, and we are both opposed to this proposal of having the rezoning done of this property. Obviously, it's been pointed out that it doesn't align with the 2025 plan. My understanding of that plan was that shopping centers and major businesses and so on were supposed to be placed on the corners where there were two, not one, but two four-lane roads, so that there was ample traffic flow for that. And so the fact that Robinwood is a four-lane road, but Kendrick is not, and yes, they're saying that they're going to spend a million dollars in making Robinwood five lanes, and they're going to do a very small portion of Kendrick to make it three lanes, just so that they can get in and out of the back of their property. But I think what they're not talking about is what's going to happen as far as Kendrick down the road. And one of the gentlemen talked about earlier that they're wanting to direct 35% of the traffic down Kendrick. Well, that's only a two-lane road, and there are a lot of subdivisions off of there, and Gastonia is going to be the one that ends up having to pay to widen that road if we have that much more traffic on Kendrick. I think that it is, it's also been pointed out, and I think that it's very unusual, that the staff did not recommend that this be done. And obviously, we don't want the extra traffic. My husband and I don't necessarily leave during those two hours of the day that they studied, at the front end and the back end. I'm a housewife, but I run a lot of errands during the day, and I'm in and out of the neighborhood a lot, and my husband goes to work at different hours. And so it is very difficult to get out of that neighborhood at all hours. And I'm not just talking about from 7:00 to 9:00, and from 4:00 to 6:00, or whatever, 5:00 to 7:00, whatever times they studied. So that's one of the things that we don't want. The other thing is, we don't want the extra noise. We don't want the extra trash and the extra lights that are going to be brought into the neighborhood. We like to be able to look, we actually have a widow's walk on top of our house, which is a very unusual thing. And my children love to up on that widow's walk to be able to see the stars. We're not going to be able to do that if we have all those extra lights and trash and cooking odors.
I'm sorry, but the red light's on.
Okay.
So if you could close it out, thanks.
Yes. We don't want our property values to go down or increase in crime. I love Harris Teeter. I miss it, but I don't want it in our neighborhood. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Roger Stowe.
Good evening, Madam Pro Tem, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Council. My name's Roger Stowe. I live at 1132 Kendrick Road. I own, my wife and I, own approximately three acres there that backs up directly to the big box that is proposed, that we would be looking at out of our backyard. Now, you've heard discussion about the traffic. Traffic on Kendrick Road is tough now. From what I could see, the developer proposes to widen the road from the intersection of Robinwood down to my property line, and that's where it stops. I could be wrong, but that's what I looked at on the map. As to Harris Teeter itself, I've looked at, inquired into Kroger. The announcement was that they would keep the same management and indicated that that would be forever. Folks don't believe that. That isn't going to happen. This gentleman that was here tonight, and I don't know where he is now, with Harris Teeter, is probably in that pay category that Kroger is going to want to cut. And they'll do it in a heartbeat. And there'll be some more. Now, I support the idea of why in the war- Now, I support the idea of why in the world would you be even interested in putting a shopping center in the middle of the nicest residential area of our town? You will diminish what's there and what's been worked hard to produce. I happen to have my house on the market, had it on the market since last year sometime. As the market improved in January of this year, so also came the announcement that somebody wanted to put a Harris Teeter in my backyard. Guess what has happened to the sale of my house? I've had three people look at it since January. Now, I'm suffering from this, big time. The Realtors say it will probably, if it is approved, cost me around $100,000 to sell my house at some price with a Harris Teeter in the backyard. Thank you for voting against this and supporting all of these fine citizens.
Thank you, sir. Anna Catherine Renfro.
I promise I'm the last Renfro tonight, unless my brother shows up. Madam Pro Tem, Council, I'm not going to be able to tell you a whole lot of stuff you don't already know, but I do represent the elusive young professional groups that we've all been hearing about, as well as 400-plus of my closest friends, some of whom are here tonight, others which couldn't make it due to family and work obligations, which I will pass up to you right now. With those signatures and the endorsements of those, I would ask you to try to put a name with a face with these people who are out here, because we're all concerned, and the people who are on those lists are equally concerned. And it only is testament to the people who have worked hard to get those signatures and the time and the amount of effort they've put into that they will receive no monetary gain for purely for the revive, for the, I guess, in keeping with their current home, I guess, homeowners. Sorry, I'm nervous. It happens. With their current predicament, which is fine. There's nothing wrong with the development as it stands in the current neighborhood setting. The development as, what they presented, is an entirely wrong location. I feel like when they were driving down Robinwood and Union Road, they must have blindfolded the people from Harris Teeter, because they obviously did not see the line, the Food Lion, the Lowe's Foods, then driving down the other side of Food, uh, Robinwood and seeing the other Lowe's Foods, taking a right onto New Hope, and then seeing the other Food Lion and the vacant Food Lion. Now, I don't know, I'm not an economics major, I'm not a business major, I'm, I'm just a lowly engineer, but I feel like when you're holding too many marbles in your hands and you put more marbles in your hands, marbles start falling out. And that's what this development would do. You're totally oversaturating a market while completely alienating the western side of Gastonia and the many neighborhoods of Belvedere, all the neighborhoods along Garrison, down by the library and next to the shield museum. What grocery store do they have to go to? Has there been any effort for this development to go over there? And I would ask you to vote no, and to push for more economic development for the people on the western side of Gastonia who look at our grocery stores and say, well, what about us? Thank you.
Thank you. John Stanley.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council, my name is John Stanley. I live at 1642 Heatherlock Drive, and thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. Those of you who know me know that I'm all about good, positive growth for our community and have been for a number of years, but I must say that I do not believe that the development under consideration this evening is good, positive growth, simply because of the saturation of supermarkets within the Robinwood area. I ask you to consider that we do have the Lowe's that was a Harris Teeter, that's with, that's about eight tenths of a mile from the proposed Kroger Harris Teeter, another Lowe's at Hoffman Road, about a mile and a half from the proposed Kroger Harris Teeter. We have a Food Lion that's eight tenths of a mile from the proposal. We have an Aldi store and a Balo less than two miles away. And then we have the Food Lion store that sits vacant three miles away. Kroger had a store here some years ago. Maybe I'm the oldest rat in the barn that remembers that, but it's, I believe, at the corner of Armstrong Road and Franklin Boulevard. It's now an office supply establishment. And I believe that competition is good for business, no doubt, and it's good for the economy, but I wonder if we're just trading businesses here. When we think of the new Winn-Dixie on New Hope Road that's now a charter school, we think of the Food Lion at Ashbrook that sits vacant and has for a while, the Hannaford Food Store near Home Depot that's now Toys R Us, the Target at Acres Center sitting empty. From a personal point of view, Rose, my wife, and I have, have lived virtually on the corner of Heatherlock Drive and Robinwood Road since 1992. That would be the first house on the right, just across the street from the proposed development. And I must tell you that we do not look forward to delivery and garbage trucks coming in at all hours. We do not look forward to the additional traffic after the build-out and the construction traffic in the months ahead. We purchased our home in 1992 in a residential area without any thought that our home would ever be a part of a commercial enterprise. I respectfully ask you to preserve the Robinwood area, leaving the zoning residential as it is now. I thank you for your service to our community. I thank you for your time tonight. Bless you for your good work. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group of speakers will, Mark Epstein, is he still here? He gone. I think he's gone. Jay Hefner has signed up, but you've already spoken. I don't want to miss anybody, so. John Howen, and I'm sorry, I'm going to have a hard time with this one. Harold, 1507 Heatherlock Drive. Who lives at 1507?
Master.
Would you like to speak?
No, it's not this.
Okay, all right. Ray Stewart. Pete Whittonby Berg?
I'm over there, I'm over there.
Okay. Tracy Smith. And Shirley Cox. And Rick Spargo. John Howen, first speaker.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmembers, I'm John Howren. My wife Susan and I reside at 311 West Sixth Avenue in Gastonia for the past 26 years. In the past few weeks, I have had dozens of conversations with citizens wondering the same thing as myself. How could anyone wanting our city to progress and prosper vote against this proposal? Our city government is continually searching for ways to balance the budget. Wouldn't it be more comfortable and satisfying to do so without having to lay off employees, decrease benefits, offer early retirements with buyouts, cut services, and possibly raise taxes? This very project is a perfect example of one way to help eliminate this ongoing endeavor. There is one other project that comes to mind, pardon me, that not only created jobs, but increased property and sales tax revenues, utility income, and image enhancement. That was the development at Cox Road and Franklin anchored by Target. This development, albeit a smaller scale, will duplicate the purpose and the result. I ask you to imagine taking the probable income and the benefits and add them to your budget formula over the next several years. The potential for adding to the plus columns is much greater with this development. Think ahead, folks. This is an opportunity for all of Gastonia whom you each serve. There is no other development like this on the table currently. That being the case, do you pass up one that offers so much for so many? I would hope not. Voting this down is likened to stalling and retard, retarding our potential. This is not what you are elected to do. Moving us forward and creating a solid future should be the objective, and yes, a solid planning and financial responsibility. I submit this affords Gastonia just that. There are three very large convenience and fuel locations under construction in this community right now. They are all in very, very high traffic areas. One at 321 and almost I-85. Any one of these will potentially have the equivalent traffic per day that this shopping center will. Yet, none of them have the ingress and egress that will be afforded this shopping center. Traffic is a real concern, or is there some other motive? For many years, I've used a quote that reads, "The pain of every change is forgotten once the benefit of that change has been realized." Folks, we're in times that we don't have many benefits afforded us. Take them as they are presented to us for the long term. We, the citizens of Gastonia, need them, and we need them now. I thank you for your concern and your abilities. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Ray Stewart?
You would thank him, would you?
Is he here? Ray Stewart, okay. Tracy Smith?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Smith, and I live at 925 Kirkald Yard, and I would just like to share with you what I witnessed several times a week, driving west on Robinwood Road past Hawx Nest School when it's in session. The parents have such a hard time getting in and out of that school presently. The parents that are leaving the school and wanting to turn left have such a hard time that they give up, they turn right, they try to cross into the left-hand lane, they get to the first left-hand turn and go in and do a U-turn so that then they can go west on Robinwood Road. And the traffic also backs up with parents trying to turn left to get into the school. That is with the traffic that we have now, and as you've heard this evening, there is a good bit of traffic that will, I mean, a good bit more traffic will be on that road traveling. And just for the safety of the children and the families in and out of that school, I don't want to repeat all the rest that you heard over and over and over again, but I wish that you would consider that school and the problem that additional traffic will make for those parents coming in and out. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley Cox?
Good evening, all. Shirley Cox, 2846 Berwick Lane. I came this evening, I think you can see what I came with, but I wanted to listen intently, pay attention to everyone and everything, because I love Gastonia, and I know that's why y'all are up there serving, and that's what we've got to kind of base our decision on. And I wanted to be willing to change my mind if I heard anything tonight that could do that. I have not. I could give you some more definite reasons why, but I think it comes down to, the big question for me is the betrayal of the people who have bought into residential zoning and that you'd be changing that on them. Everyone, of course, has the reason why, very personally, this, you know, the noise, the traffic, the this, that, and the other, but I think that is the major moral issue. And the one other thing I wanted to say that I think has, might be just a little different, is that the word progress has been mentioned many times tonight and usually saying to be for this development. I think that we're finding, as time goes on, that true foresight, as far as talking about progress, is that we need to probably keep our green space, and we certainly need to protect our neighborhoods. And I just wanted to share that with everyone tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, still, don't know.
Rick Spargo.
My name is Rick Spargo, and I live at 3076 Drayton Hallway in Gastonia, right in the Riverwood area. Appreciate all your service to the community. Not really dressed for the occasion, I just kind of came on a whim, so I thought I would hang around, but I think, I don't, I don't really think I can, and I don't have much, anything prepared, because I really didn't prepare to come, but I guess the only thing that I could add that hasn't already been said by most everybody as far as traffic and stats and all this, is I was born in Gastonia, 1961, right down the street here at Garrison Memorial Hospital. And some of you have been here, I'm, I'm 51 years old, a lot of you have been here longer than me, and some of you haven't been here as long, but I've seen Gastonia change in a lot of ways, because my memory is still pretty good. And there was a time when I thought of Robinwood Road as being a rural area. I remember when Ray's Country Store was on the corner of Union Road, and there was Neil Hawkins Road, and there wasn't really anything else out there. I live out there right now. In fact, I can walk to the Lowe's, which used to be the Harris Teeter, as, literally as quick as I can get to my car right now. I mean, I'm two minutes away. Harris Teeter was a great corporate citizen for us there. Lowe's is a good corporate citizen. They don't have near the kind of food and service that Harris Teeter had, and so we miss them, and that's one of the reasons, I guess, I'm here. But I wasn't bothered a bit, and I'm not bothered a bit, by being literally a parking lot away from Lowe's, Foods, Food Lion, all that stuff. So, I'm not afraid of change. I grew up in the Acres Center area, so maybe, maybe that's part of my genre, but we were right there. I don't know how the Belvedere, those are really nice houses over there in Belvedere. I don't know if any of you have ever been over there. I'm sure that a lot of those people, when Acres Center was going to be built back in the 60s, were probably in here raising holy, you know what? This is going to tear our neighborhood down. That's a great neighborhood. I would love to have one of those houses over there, but all I can say is, I'm for this. I think that it would be great for the community. I work, right now, I'm doing jobs in Charleston, Morrisville, North Carolina, which was just voted number one city in North Carolina, Raleigh, Knightdale, Nashville, Charlotte. All of these areas are, I mean, they are embracing what these people are bringing. And like I said, I've been in Gastonia a long time, since 1961. I welcome what you guys are bringing. I really do, and I hope that you guys will support it and will allow them to come.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask the questions. That's all the people that have signed up to speak. If there is someone out there in this audience that has not spoken, that would like the opportunity, please come to the podium. Yes, ma'am? If you will come to the podium and, and state your name and address.
My name is Alice Appeling, and I live at 1210 Lamp Post Court in Planters Ridge. One of my main concerns is, I, we have about 50 feet from our backyard to where the back of Harris Teeter's will be, where all of the trash dumps and all that is. No one has said anything. My husband travels, I'm alone a lot. One of the things that I'm concerned about is my safety, being there alone, being that close to the back of the line. I'm also concerned about the noise, just like a lot of other people said. I'm going to say something that's probably going to upset a few people, but I just feel that I need to say it. There was a couple people that made the comment to me, and they know who they are, that if I did not want a shopping center in my backyard, so to speak, would I rather have a little housing? To me, that's like threatening me. I don't really want either one, but I do know that it- I don't really want either one, but I do know that it is, it is zoned residential. But that is my main concern. I don't like being threatened. And as I said, the big thing is safety, the noise, and we've been told so many different things. First, it was going to be a berm at the back of my yard. Next, we were told that it was going to be a brick wall. Then we were told that it was probably going to be concrete and they're going to paint it. And then we were told also, as a gentleman said, that they would either give us the property, which I don't really care about that, or we could use it. And then they said about the trees. Well, I've done had three trees to fall across our yard and almost hit our house that we've had to have cut down that was not on our property. A lot of those trees back there are old straggly pines and in the wintertime, there's no, I mean, you can see all of that mess back there. So those are some of my concerns. But I just don't like to be threatened. I don't like to be threatened that either it's going to be this or it's going to be that. I think it's up to you guys and I do appreciate you listening to me and hearing my concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir?
I may be your last one. I'm Gordon Quarles and I live at 5061 Kentwood Drive in Gastonia. I've listened to the comments that have been made tonight and there are many of my friends that are here this evening whom I greatly respect. I can appreciate the fact that individuals want to protect their residential properties. I too am a banker here in Gastonia and like Don Harrison said earlier, I have seen the economy over the last five to six years really be hammered here in Gaston County. We, there's, we have downsized as far as commercial loan officers here in Gastonia and quite frankly, there isn't much commercial development that is going on in Gaston County. When you talk about a tax base, we're a city and we're a county, gets the majority of its tax funding is from commercial businesses, not residences. I believe that Mr. Vermillion and the developer, they want to be a community partner here in Gaston County. I have seen their projects in Charlotte. One of them is located in close proximity to my brother's residence. You would drive by there and with the buffering that is put in place, wouldn't know that it was there. When you go into this particular development, it is, you could put in some of the green areas that they have, you could put a picnic blanket out there and enjoy an afternoon with one of your children. I have seen the photographs and the pictures of this proposed development. It is going to be an asset to Gaston County and we should be open to and welcoming to developers who want to come in and put in something that is as upscale as this project. I would ask respectfully that y'all vote in the affirmative for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me? No, no, the overflow room is closed. From what I understand. Right. Okay. We've heard from everybody and now it is time to have the attorneys or whoever is the spokesman for the attorneys to, they will have five minutes for a rebuttal. We'll start with the applicant, Mrs. Pascal.
Madam Mayor, pro tem, while Ms. Pascal comes to the podium, are there any questions that council has of any witness who spoke and staff or the engineers or anybody before rebuttal?
After the rebuttal? Before the rebuttal?
Before rebuttal. Are there any, are there any questions?
Are there any questions from the council? Okay. Directed to?
This will be directed to Jason Thompson.
Stay. You got your voice on?
I ain't supposed to be on. Can you hear me now? Wasn't that a commercial? Jason, we've heard a lot tonight about the 2025 plan. We've heard people say, "Don't stray from it. Don't do the wrong thing. Don't abide, you know, make sure you abide." But we've heard other people say, "Well, it's just a plan. It's not, you know, law," anything like that. But in the information that you provided to us and our agenda, you touched on that a little bit and I just kind of want you to, to expand on that because you have consistency with the comprehensive plan. The future land use map within the 2025 comprehensive plan indicates that the majority of the subject area is appropriate for residential uses in the future. A small portion of the subject site closest to the Robinwood Road and Kendrick Road intersection is however indicated for commercial uses on that same map. Additionally, the development strategies map in the 2025 plan indicates that the Robinwood Road and Kendrick Road intersection is appropriate as a neighborhood business center. So would it be fair to say that this, if this rezoning were to pass, it's not totally outside of the 2025 plan or the scope of the 2025 plan?
I would agree with that statement. When you, when you look, and that's why that explanation is provided, excuse me, in the staff report. The way the comprehensive plan, without getting into too much of the details and the weeds on this, but the way the comprehensive plan is structured is that you have several different chapters that deal with subject areas as you move through the plan. You then move into the land use section. That is broken down by sectors. This particular sector, the southeast sector of the city, just like all the other sector chapters, include in them different types of strategies for, for development and growth in the community. And then more specifically, you have the future land use map, which you referenced and is referenced in the staff report, and also the development strategies map, which is also referenced in the staff report. So when, when I look at those things, when you look at the future land use map, that is more looking at properties and seeing how those properties are currently used, how they are projected to be used into the future. When you, when you see that map in the comprehensive, in the 2025 comprehensive plan, it largely mirrors up to what the zoning map currently looks like. So you've got that existing roughly 40,000-square-foot commercial approval that is in place right now, and then you, you have that residential area beyond it. Further, you have the development strategies map, which is, which is a little more conceptual, I guess you would say. And it has identified, just like the 2010 plan prior to the 2025 plan identified, that location, that intersection, as a potential location for a neighborhood business center. Now, that's a little bit of a loose term. It doesn't really get into specifics and terminology, so I would characterize the issue as one of scale. And it's, it's, it's really a determination as to whether or not a particular scale of development meets that neighborhood business center designation or whether it gets too large to meet it. And unfortunately, the plan really does not provide much specificity beyond that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify because I know that the comprehensive plan was thrown around a lot tonight and I know we have people watching on television and I don't know that they fully understand what maybe the comprehensive plan was and that there is also the strategic plan as well. So those can often differ on what they are and I didn't hear the strategic plan brought up tonight, so.
Okay. Councilman Campbell.
I guess I'm a little bit kind of confused after the, the last exchange we had. Then why is there no consensus or staff recommendation? That now I'm, I'm kind of confused over that. We just, I think, heard that you, you kind of thought that it was part of the plan and, but yet we have no recommendation and you're telling Councilman Pierceall it is, it is a pretty good fit, but then we, we're not recommending that fit. So where, where are we?
I think that, that, you know, my answer, what I, what I was trying to say is that there is a little bit of gray area in the comprehensive plan when it comes to this location. You have one component of it which, you know, maybe gets a little more down into the details and closely mirrors up to the city's existing zoning map because there's a recognition when that plan is put in place that there are existing detailed approvals that were put in place many years ago back in the 90s. But at the same time, there is a recognition, when you look elsewhere in the plan, that this type of intersection, because of its location within the community, because of road widening projects that have taken place in the past and because of overall growth characteristics in the region, that it does have potential for a neighborhood business center. Now, with regard to the staff recommendation, you know, as I, as I said before, any time an application is submitted, it goes through staff review and staff evaluation. You know, it is my obligation, it is my responsibility as a planner to report to the council and to the planning commission factually and accurately what the outcome of, of that evaluation is. And in this particular case, you know, when you, when you look into the staff report, that's exactly what's reflected. There was, there was not a particular consensus that came out of the staff review. Now, I'm also the staff member who gets to stand here and, and make the presentation and, and, you know, I've, I now have the benefit of having heard all of this discussion that you've all heard and just like the planning commission heard it. So, you know, as an individual, my own, you know, personal opinion as a professional, you know, outside of staff's review because that's the entire staff, you know, may be a little bit different than, than the overall staff's review perspective of it. When I look at it, I agree with a lot of the statements about the quality of this development. It is of a high quality, in my opinion. I, I, just like other staff members, review a lot of development proposals. And I absolutely, as I said, would characterize it as a high-quality development if it is approved. It's hard for me to envision if this is denied and someone was to come forward with another proposal. What are the odds of it being of the same high quality? Well, it's difficult to say. It's difficult to forecast. We can't obviously read, you know, into the future. But high-quality development proposals don't necessarily come along all that often. The fact remains, though, from, from my perspective, that this is still a very, very difficult land use decision. And whether it's a high-quality development or whether it, whether it isn't meeting that standard of whatever everyone defines as high quality, doesn't change the fact that it remains a very difficult land use decision. So if it is the decision of the council that a grocery store anchored shopping center is a good idea in this location as a land use, then my individual opinion is that you probably won't see one of this quality again.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, Jason, again, a follow-up on this. You know, there are three terms here that I'd like to see clarified and those are the difference between a neighborhood business center, a CUNY business center, and a regional business center. Could you do that, please?
It's difficult to do it with absolute certainty because, quite frankly, in the 2025 comprehensive plan, there is not a lot of particular guidance. In other words, when you go in and you look at those designations in the plan, there's nowhere you can look to where those terms are defined. So it's up to, you know, all of our intellect in terms of logically, what do we think those things mean? Well, you know, I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a tiered approach to looking at development proposals. Regional typically is going to indicate that you're, it's large enough, it has enough gravity, it has the types of uses that are going to draw from, you know, something other than, we've heard a one-mile or a two-mile or a five-mile radius. Well, regional is going to draw from the entire region, most likely. You, you probably want to envision something on the scale of Franklin Square, something down in that area. And even one component part of all those different bases of Franklin Square would probably be considered regional. Community, on the other hand, would, would very likely be very, very small scale. Hard for me to tie it to a specific square footage. Neighborhood would probably sit somewhere in, in the middle of that, which, you know, when you look out there right now at the existing development approvals, you know, that's almost 40,000 square feet. It's not certainly the size of what you have before you tonight, but that's a rather large development in and of itself, so. I wish I could tell you that there is a definition to each of those terms included in the 2025 plan, but there is not.
I, I think the plan is flawed in that regard. I think it should have been better defined.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Jason. We will go to the rebuttal time. The applicant will have five minutes to rebuttal.
Thank you. I want to respond to several points that were made. As to the property on the other side of Kendrick Road, I would remind you that property is not part of this rezoning. If there's going to be any plans for development of that property, it would have to go through the same process that we have followed tonight. I would also remind you of the numerous conditions that the developer has agreed to, which is part of our site plan. The developer has agreed to even more conditions tonight. You heard Mr. Vermillion say that he would agree to a condition as to utilizing the same building materials on the rear of the property, which partially answers planning staff's concern. He, you also heard the developer commit to a condition to limit deliveries for Harris Teeter to, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And you heard a condition to limit deliveries.
... comprehensive plan when it comes to this location. You have one component of it which, you know, maybe gets a little more down into the details and closely mirrors up to the city's existing zoning map because there's a recognition when that plan is put in place that there are existing detailed approvals that were put in place many years ago back in the 90s. But at the same time, there is a recognition, when you look elsewhere in the plan, that this type of intersection, because of its location within the community, because of road widening projects that have taken place in the past and because of overall growth characteristics in the region, that it does have potential for a neighborhood business center. Now, with regard to the staff recommendation, you know, as I, as I said before, any time an application is submitted, it goes through staff review and staff evaluation. You know, it is my obligation, it is my responsibility as a planner to report to the council and to the planning commission factually and accurately what the outcome of, of that evaluation is. And in this particular case, you know, when you, when you look into the staff report, that's exactly what's reflected. There was, there was not a particular consensus that came out of the staff review. Now, I'm also the staff member who gets to stand here and, and make the presentation and, and, you know, I've, I now have the benefit of having heard all of this discussion that you've all heard and just like the planning commission heard it. So, you know, as an individual, my own, you know, personal opinion as a professional, you know, outside of staff's review because that's the entire staff, you know, may be a little bit different than, than the overall staff's review perspective of it. When I look at it, I agree with a lot of the statements about the quality of this development. It is of a high quality, in my opinion. I, I, just like other staff members, review a lot of development proposals. And I absolutely, as I said, would characterize it as a high-quality development if it is approved. It's hard for me to envision if this is denied and someone was to come forward with another proposal. What are the odds of it being of the same high quality? Well, it's difficult to say. It's difficult to forecast. We can't obviously read, you know, into the future. But high-quality development proposals don't necessarily come along all that often. The fact remains, though, from, from my perspective, that this is still a very, very difficult land use decision. And whether it's a high-quality development or whether it, whether it isn't meeting that standard of whatever everyone defines as high quality, doesn't change the fact that it remains a very difficult land use decision. So if it is the decision of the council that a grocery store anchored shopping center is a good idea in this location as a land use, then my individual opinion is that you probably won't see one of... probably won't see one of this quality again.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, Jason, again, a follow-up on this. You know, there are three terms here that I'd like to see clarified, and those are the difference between a neighborhood business center, a community business center, and a regional business center. Could you do that, please?
It's difficult to do it with absolute certainty because, quite frankly, in the 2025 comprehensive plan, there is not a lot of particular guidance. In other words, when you go in and you look at those designations in the plan, there's nowhere you can look to where those terms are defined. So it's up to, you know, all of our intellect in terms of logically, what do we think those things mean? Well, you know, I think it's a tiered approach to looking at development proposals. Regional typically is going to indicate that it's large enough, it has enough gravity, it has the types of uses that are going to draw from, you know, something other than we've heard a one-mile or a two-mile or a five-mile radius. Well, regional is going to draw from the entire region, most likely. You probably want to envision something on the scale of Franklin Square, something down in that area. Even one component part of all those different phases of Franklin Square would probably be considered regional. Community, on the other hand, would very likely be very, very small scale, hard for me to tie it to a specific square footage. Neighborhood would probably sit somewhere in the middle of that, which, you know, when you look out there right now at the existing development approvals, you know, that's almost 40,000 square feet. It's not certainly the size of what you have before you tonight, but that's a rather large development in and of itself. So I wish I could tell you that there is a definition to each of those terms included in the 2025 plan, but there is not.
I think the plan is flawed in that regard. I think it should have been better defined.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Jason. We will go to the rebuttal time. The applicant will have five minutes to rebuttal.
Thank you. I want to respond to several points that were made. As to the property on the other side of Kendrick Road, I would remind you that property is not part of this rezoning. If there's going to be any plans for development of that property, it would have to go through the same process that we have followed tonight. I would also remind you of the numerous conditions that the developer has agreed to, which is part of our site plan. The developer has agreed to even more conditions tonight. You heard Mr. Vamian say that he would agree to a condition as to utilizing the same building materials on the rear of the property, which partially answers planning staff's concern. You also heard the developer commit to a condition to limit deliveries for Harris Teeter from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And you heard a condition to limit deliveries to the entrance coming off of Robinwood Road. I also want to clarify that under a CD zoning, the developer cannot add back in uses that have been conditioned out. And you've been provided with a list of the number of uses that have been conditioned out by this developer. You also heard Mr. Holder state from the North Carolina Department of Transportation that the developer has implemented all recommended mitigations for traffic. In other words, in layman's terms, all road improvements that were needed have been included in our plan. As to tax revenue, Mr. Hebner did not include the county tax revenues of $75,000 per year that would also be generated from this site. Also, as to the current zoning, this rezoning for the 23 patio homes and the 38,000 square feet of commercial use was approved in 1991 for the patio homes and in 1994 for the commercial zoning. There has been 12 years to pass with no development on this parcel. With this application, you have a known investment that will generate jobs, tax revenues, and utility revenues. There are numerous folks support. Petitions have been delivered to you, are delivered to the city clerk earlier in the week. I have those petitions here with me if any of you need to see those. There were over 485 signatures in support of the development. We are asking for approval of our rezoning request in order to bring a beautiful, upscale neighborhood retail center to the city of Gastonia. Not only will retail be brought, but hundreds of jobs, over $8.5 million in increased tax base, over $1 million in road improvements, revenue through utility usage to the city of Gastonia, an opportunity for convenient shopping and dining to residential areas, and properly buffered businesses with upscale amenities and exteriors. It is essentially unheard of for a developer to offer to add 80-foot buffers, offer to deed the buffer to the adjoining landowners if they want it, install a brick privacy wall, spend $1 million in road improvements, commit to utility revenue with the city, with no incentives. Oh, and don't forget the increase of an $8.5 million tax base, again, with no incentives. This is a rare opportunity our city is being offered at a time when other municipalities compete daily just for the chance to bring a retail center such as this to their community. This is an important moment for our city of Gastonia leaders to be progressive, to improve our community, to put the desires of the larger community first, which will result in benefits to all our citizens. It is my hope that you will make our vision a reality for the city by approving our rezoning request. I thank you for your patience. I also thank all of the speakers for their respect for which they have treated this situation. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I will now recognize the opponents. You are the delegated closer?
I am the delegated closer.
If you may state your name and address.
My name is Terry Kenny. I live at 1331 Heather Lock Drive, and obviously you can tell that I must not be well-liked by my community if I'm put up last after a four-hour hearing. So I welcome the opportunity to talk to you tonight, and I am here with the folks that are opposed to the rezoning. First of all, let me say that the 2025 plan, both the strategic plan and the development plan, there were hundreds of hours' time spent putting that together. Multiple people looked at it before a decision was made. If you can call 104,000-square-foot development with over 700 parking spaces a neighborhood business, I think you would be the only one that ever read it that said that. I don't think that that implies that that is a neighborhood business. What the 2025 plan does, and I think people don't recognize how hard your job is, but what it does is it requires thoughtful growth, growth for the entire city, not growth for a few people. Piecemeal zoning is what you're being asked to do tonight. You're being asked to look at one parcel of land at one moment in time. Yes, it's all shiny and it's all new, and boy, does that look good. However, you've got to realize that every decision you make has a consequence down the road. And the consequences here is that a piecemeal zoning will affect every mom-and-dad store in the neighborhood, every family restaurant, and it will affect the other grocery stores. If they say they will bring in more jobs, please tell me who's going to buy more groceries in Gaston County. If you don't increase the population, there's going to be a finite amount of groceries that's going to be sold. All it will do is pull market share away from somebody else. There's going to be, I've heard a great clip, well, fantastic, that'll be the fourth one we have. So the one thing we know is that if you don't increase the population, there won't be more heads to cut. It will simply pull that business away from somebody else. Will this store be the tipping point so that the Lowe's Foods down where the Harris Teeter was closes? Or will it be the one that the food line closes? Or will it be the little family restaurant right down there that closes? That's why that you have development plans, because your job is not to look at one parcel of land at one moment in time, it is to look at the best thing for the whole city. What we don't want to do is to make a decision that is contrary. This is not a neighborhood business, and this is contrary to the 2025 plan, and then look down the road and you see those unintended consequences. My grandma used to say, "The birdies will come home to roost." And let me tell you, the birdies that's going to come home to roost for y'all, and that's when Kendrick Road has to be widened. I acquired rights away for the city of Gastonia for 20 years. I know what it takes to get a road widened, and Kendrick Road is going to be your little birdie that's going to come home to roost when you, the city of Gastonia, is required to do the widening of Kendrick Road. You don't hear this big, "We're going to widen Kendrick Road, but we're going to move 35% of the traffic out there." They're going to run a little driveway right on up to the end of that, and then from there on out to that traffic circle. You think about it. It's going to be one of those consequences when the shine wears off, that y'all sit back and go, "Oh, my goodness." This is a development that needs to be where commercial development is. I was amazed when the man came and said, "Look down there where the Target is." Oh, my goodness. If you can compare this to where the Target is, then you have really stretched, because that is an appropriate place. Commercial development, surrounded by commercial development, not commercial development stuck in the middle of one of the nicest subdivision areas that you have. You want to bring people in, where are they going to want to live? Are you putting this at Kramer Mountain? I don't think so. What you've got to do is protect the neighborhoods, protect the neighbors who support the eight grocery stores that are already within a mile. It's a hard decision, I know it is, but stick to your development plan. It will serve you well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we question rebuttal?
Uh-huh. Yes. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I was so anxious to run away.
Thank you for coming back. I appreciate what you had to say, but I found your last bit of your statement a little intriguing, because it sounds to me like you're suggesting that if we were to deny this, that the city would never have to widen Kendrick Road. Wouldn't if residential development were to continue in that area, wouldn't Kendrick Road eventually need to be widened anyway?
Absolutely not. Not with this proposed development. If you look at NC DOT, and I think Mr. Holder's here, I met with Mr. Spangler also with NC DOT, and the proposed number, or the expected number of trips is 10 a day, 10 a day for a development. So if you put a development in there, then the amount of traffic is going to be minuscule to the additional 14,188, additional trips, according to their report that you have. So the last thing that you want to think about is, think about the cost of Kendrick Road. If you've ever done a condemnation, you will know that it would be extraordinarily expensive.
I don't think you understand what I'm saying. I'm saying if we deny this...
Yes, sir.
Your statement is Gastonia will never have to widen Kendrick.
Oh, I don't, I can't tell you that we're never going to have to do anything. You know, never say never. I hardly know what the future will bring. But most assuredly, if you move 35% of the traffic out onto Kendrick Road from this type of development, then that's going to be extraordinarily problematic, and that reality is going to hit you sooner than sometime way out there in the future.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we are at this point in this public hearing that I am going to ask if we are ready to close, if there's a motion to close the public hearing, and...
I will second.
Okay. All in favor? The public hearing has been closed. There will be discussions by the council, but before we go into that, I would like to take a 10-minute recess. It's 10:20. It's been a long time. So if you need to go out and stretch and stand up, then certainly feel free to do that, and we will be back in session by 10:30. And we will be back in session by 10:30.
No rest for the wicked. Dave, I'll take your calls tonight if you're tired or anything. I'd love to poke around in somebody's ankle. And you'd probably like to go do a search for some we can do.
We are going to resume the council meeting. And at this point, the public hearing has been closed. And any council discussion? Any questions that you would... Because we cannot ask questions now that we have closed the public hearing. We will not be able to ask questions of any of the speakers, or of the applicants, or opponents. Is that right?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mayor Protam, I just wanted to personally thank everyone that's come out tonight over the last few months. Literally hundreds and hundreds of emails and phone calls that some of you placed to each and every one of us. It is appreciated, the fact that you're involved. And whether you're pro or con on this issue, the fact that you did get involved is very much appreciated. So I just wanted to say thank you. And I have to say, as far as response, it's probably been about 50-50 even, for and against. So unfortunately, half of you are going to be disappointed. And there's nothing we can do about that. But I did want to personally thank each of you for your statements, your contributions, and for your involvement.
Councilman Kimble.
I wanted to take an opportunity also to thank our dedicated staff. Early on, could see that this was going to involve large sections of our community. And spoke with Jenny and Regina. And I probably should have gotten a better BlackBerry, looking back on it. But I didn't. So I had them reduce everything to a loose leaf book. And they prepared this with every comment and every statement and everything that came into the city. And I know it wasn't easy keeping track of all that stuff. And really want to say thank you to all of the staff that put all this work in, even as much as to the best of their ability, ensuring that we had a safe area tonight, that we had ample room. And I believe everybody got their chance to experience what I believe is democracy in action. Being able to come up in a safe environment and say what you wanted to say about the particular issue that's facing us. And I thank everybody for coming out. And again, thank you, chief, bar chief, police chief. Ed, Flip, I know you were going between the rooms. Jason, I know you put a ton of time in this. You probably came in early in the morning. Thank you all.
Any other questions?
Do you want discussion about the issue?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It wasn't about the issue.
Yes, sir.
It's certainly been a long night. And I'll try and make my points short and sweet. We live in a great community. You can see that by the participation here tonight. And I appreciate everybody making the effort in any way that you did, by sitting here, by communicating, by email, or by phone call. And I apologize for the ones I didn't get back to. I got a scathing email today because I hadn't responded in 24 hours. But I did respond today. So in any regard, let's talk about the issue. The best way I can compare this is, well, let me set the tone by just speaking to a quote from the introduction to what is a comprehensive plan. And I'm taking it out of context because it's in the middle of the second paragraph. It says, "It is a tool, albeit a powerful tool, that provides many benefits to the community, including benefits to existing and future residents and those wishing to invest in our community. Planning commissioners and city council members will rely upon the plan as they make decisions on Gastonia's growth and development. In addition to providing land use recommendations for consideration, the plan serves as a guide for consistent decision-making. Citizens rely on the plan when determining where to live, work, and make property investments. The location of future roads, industries, and commercial areas are critical to these important decisions. Planners use the plan to assist citizens and the development community by communicating the city's preferred growth patterns and preferred type of growth prior to investment-related decisions. Having a solid comprehensive plan also communicates to the world that, quote, 'The city of Gastonia has vision, focus, and a plan of action,' unquote. For those wishing to make investments in our community, the efficiency, stability, and strength communicated by the comprehensive plan are important.' Now, that doesn't mean we can't, you know, swear from that plan. And we may do that tonight. But I think this is to be respected. And I was one of two council members that voted for this plan. History plays an important part in the decisions we make as a community. And so this is a copy of the map from the 1995 plan. Of course, this was a plan that was started in 1991. It was culminated in its completion and adoption in 1995. I didn't have a place or a vote in this plan. But this plan and the 2025 maps are essentially identical for this particular property in question. So you see, there's some history involved with this particular piece of property. And I think many people have spoken to that tonight. The circumstance that we are presented tonight is trying to fit a square peg in a round hole. And I can compare this to the fact that, you know, the developers tried very hard to, you know, whittle the corners off the square. But try as you may, you cannot get it into the round hole because it's out of place. I think it's an excellent plan. I think it's a wonderful plan. I embrace it 100%. It's in the wrong location. It is not where it needs to be. The roads do not support it. We have other commercial properties available that will support this plan, probably with a fraction of the cost for the developer. Because the road development is already in place. They don't have to put $1 million into the road. In fact, they probably don't even have to put the extra money they want to put into this because they're having to buy our votes. See, you have to up the ante when you go into an area that's got the highest resistance. So, and I appreciate it. I really appreciate the efforts that they're making. And I think they'll do well in another location very close to there in Gastonia, and the community will do better. Now, one other thing that I want to refer to, and then I'll get off my soapbox. And that is, is the comprehensive plan speaks to the development of the entire community and the sustainable growth of the entire community. And it needs to be balanced. And it refers to the fact that West Gastonia suffers at the face of East Gastonia.
Yes.
So the problem here is that East Gastonia continues to reap benefits just by whatever it is that attracts people to East and Southeast Gastonia, but it's to the detriment of West Gastonia. Now, we're not here to try and determine market and where market is to go. But we can, in some way, try to make a message to the bigger community that we would like to see more balanced growth. And that's all I have to say.
Councilman Gallo.
Thanks, Dave.
Sure, Jim.
This is a very, very difficult decision for the people on the city council here. I understand the homeowners and the issues, and I appreciate their enthusiasm and their cause. And they have some very valid objections. Rezoning issues is a delicate balance between the developer and the public's best interest. In regards to the 28 accidents that have occurred, I believe over a five-year period, between Robinwood Road and Kendrick Road, from what I understand from the developer, he's offering a turning lane into Heatherlock so the current residents do not have to make a left-hand turn from the fast lane, where a number of residents have been rear-ended on Robinwood Road. I see this as a safety issue and not one and one that will be corrected at the developer's expense, $1 million. The developer is also offering to give property owners that bump up against the property in Planters Ridge an extra 80 feet. Now, for me to, you know, I know Nancy said from that wall to that wall. For me to get my arms around 80 feet, I have to think about football. 10 yards is 30 feet. 20 yards is 60 feet. This is almost 30 yards. That's a significant amount of land. To increase one's backyard, plus a six-foot wall? Now, when I visited Planters Ridge, I stopped by Vernon Vaughn's house. And he brought me in the backyard and we were talking. And he showed me these huge Leland cypresses behind his house. And I said, "Wow, beautiful trees." He said, "Well, they're not mine. St. Mary's put them in." Because the wall's right behind there. I couldn't even see the wall. These are huge Leland cypresses. If you ever want to, you know, go down there, he's all the way at the end of the cul-de-sac on your right. They're a house up. They block the wall and you can't even see it. So if you get the additional 80 feet, you could plant Leland cypresses and you can create a natural screen from the Harris Teeter. I am also for this project because during the recent budget meeting, each city council person recognized that real inflation is hitting the city as well as everybody else here. And real inflation's about 8%. The increased cost of gas, city supplies, cars, and all that it takes to keep the city running. Plus, it would be hard for me to look in the eyes of our police officers and our firemen and our city staff who have not had a salary increase in over five years' time. That's ridiculous. That's an abnormal amount of time. As our city manager, Ed Munt, has said, "We only have so many levers to pull." In order to increase the city's revenue, we either have to raise property taxes on citizens of Gastonia, which I am against, or we develop a tax base. This new clean development allows us to start increasing our tax base the right way. The other item I am for is jobs. My question, how many jobs has the tech park brought? And I believe someone said 115. And that's over a five-year period. This can bring 300 to 400 jobs. And you might say, "Oh, they're not the kind of jobs we need." Well, the highest unemployment amount in Gastonia is between the 17-year-olds and the 25-year-olds. Those jobs would certainly be welcome for people that want a wait tables in that age category, being cashiers or stockboys. And let's, you know, let's consider this segment of our population. They cannot get unemployment because they are part-timers. But they still need employment. This is not just about Harris Teeter. Just like when Target started saying they were going to move, everybody focused on Target. However, the whole of Gaston Mall has blossomed. You have Joseph A. Banks there. You have Tavern 24. You have McAllisters. You have TJ Maxx. You have Dick's Sporting Goods. From what I understand, Joseph A. Banks in sales does better in Gastonia than some of their stores in Charlotte. Because the one here in Gastonia pulls from Cleveland County, Lincoln County, and also South Carolina. It's easier for them to come here than truck into Charlotte. The developer can encourage other people, other businesses to come here, like a Carrabba's Restaurant, a PF Chang's, a Bonefish, Chick-fil-A. Of course, in this development, they would have a Starbucks. This development can draw traffic away from our congested Cox Road and Franklin Boulevard. And at the same time, allow citizens of South Gastonia to save gasoline and be able to shop close to their homes. I am for a clean development. I am for jobs. I am for expanding our tax base. These are all positives. I like it. Thank you.
Any other discussion by council? Is there a motion?
Mayor Protam, I would like to make a motion, if I could, regarding the rezoning. However... However, I did talk to legal counsel and prior to that motion, I would actually like to make a motion about the consistency and reasonableness of the rezoning request in relation to our comprehensive plan. Having said that, I would like permission to have the floor for two separate motions.
Okay, that's what I was going to add. Okay, you're going to present two separate motions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
My first motion is to find that the proposed rezoning would be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed development would be at an existing high-traffic intersection that is designated as a neighborhood business center for the southeast sector of the city in the 2025 comprehensive plan. The second reason is the proposed development would provide neighborhood services to the surrounding area and the city as a whole in a coordinated and consolidated commercial shopping center that is consistent with the standards of our UDO. The third reason is because the area west of the property on Robinwood Road has been transitioning from residential to office, institutional, multifamily residential, and commercial developments in the past decade. And the last is because the area immediately surrounding the Robinwood Road and Kendrick, excuse me, Kendrick Road intersection has been transitioning from residential zoning to office and commercial zoning over the past decade as well. So I put that in the form of a motion so that we do bring this in consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
No. We're saying that this request would fit with the comprehensive plan.
Any discussion? There's a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Mr. Attorney?
We still need a motion either to approve or deny the rezoning.
The rezoning.
Request.
Well, that's the second part of my motion.
Okay.
Or the second motion that I wanted to request. I would make the motion that we approve the application for rezoning the property to a C3 CD with the proposed conditions set forth in the agenda and also presented here tonight by staff and the applicant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
Madam Mayor, even though the vote is deadlocked, it does not pass because of the filing of the valid protestant.
Right. All right. Can I say something? I would like to just thank everyone too for being here, for taking part in the process. And this council works real hard at trying to look at what is in the best interest of the whole. And everybody has been very professional tonight and I appreciate that. And we still have some work to do on our agenda. So if the ones of you that will be leaving, if you will just do that quietly so we can continue to have our council meeting, thank you very much.
We already got another spot. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You're welcome.
We prepared well, all the comments, both sides were very thoughtful. And I wish we had more citizen input of the quality that we had with this whole discussion. Yeah, well, you're welcome, you're welcome.
I'll make sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, girl. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, good. So, I'll do it in there, okay?
Hey, Derry, how are you? Enjoying your remarks? Right. Bob? Okay, you owe me a knee replacement. I'll tease, I'll tease. All right. Oh, you're welcome, you're welcome. I think we tried to do the right thing for the bigger picture.
Really?
So... You're quite welcome, you're quite welcome. Yeah, you like that? Quote me on that one.
Okay, sure.
So you're quite welcome, yes, I enjoyed your...
They're well spoken.
Okay, let's go ahead and finish page. Item number seven, Jason, you still here? It's second reading of the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. Jason Thompson.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item was before you at a recent council meeting. And the item was approved by council via the vote, but since it lacked a two-thirds majority, it does require the second reading. Ash, City Attorney Ash Smith can provide some more details in that regard. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
There's not a public hearing. It's just before the council on a vote.
Questions?
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor.
Go right ahead, sir.
I hope we're going to be pretty consistent tonight since we're sticking with what's in the UBO and the comprehensive plan and not pass this on the second reading, but we'll see.
Was that a motion? Oh, a statement, okay.
A little bit childish, to be honest with you. Whatever.
Okay, is there, I guess we need a motion?
I make a motion that we pass it as proposed.
I will second that motion.
Discussion?
What was the motion? I'm sorry.
Pass it.
To pass it?
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much. It passed. Item eight is an appointment to the Gastonia Planning Commission, Ward Four. Presidentation, Mayor and Council are going to discuss this tonight. Ed? Yeah, have you got something?
I was going to say, I don't have any prospects at this time, so...
You want to just delay that to the next meeting?
That would be great, Mayor. Thank you very much.
That's what I think we should do and we can all talk about it if you want to. And I believe I'm correct in saying that that person lives in Ward Four. Is that correct?
They have to.
They have to live in Ward Four, yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, city attorney's report. We will do that at the next meeting. City attorney's report, Ash?
I have no report, Madam, Mr. Mayor.
Madam?
Madam Mayor Protem all night.
Well, I've been called lots of things, not madam, lately, but, okay, thank you. City manager report, Mr. Munt?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City council report, Mrs. Mayor Protem, Mrs. Craig.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Porter? You going to turn your thing on or you just want us to hear you from a distance? Did anybody hear you at all? Go ahead. Is that a motion?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Next, Susan Williams. Mr. Pierceall?
No report. It's due to the lateness of hour. I'll save mine until the next meeting.
Mr. Gallagher?
No report.
Dave?
No report.
Walt?
No report, sir.
Move that we, do a hear or motion we adjourn? A move. On the favor, say aye.